Okay, I think we're up. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for coming. As you can see, we are down a few members. And I drew the short straw, so I will start the meeting off today. This is our January tenth workshop meeting, and our first item on the agenda is the agenda review for the January fourteenth regular meeting. And let us, so if everyone can probably pull up the agenda from the other meeting, give us just a minute. Regular school board meeting. All right, and the --
Yes, she is.
She is.
Traffic is unbelievable again.
That's all right. My mother used to say they open the door and let everybody out at the same time. So Ms. Fisher is here. We're just starting the agenda review piece. We're looking at our agenda for January fourteenth, and the first item is the letter D, executive services.
Yes, ma'am.
While you're getting pulled up, are there any, on our question sheet, I don't see anything for D, superintendent, is there something?
That is correct. We did not receive questions from D.
Okay. Ms. Fisher, just let me know when you're all ready.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you.
Any assistance?
I think I'm okay.
Okay. So we're starting on E, is academic services.
Right. First question was E one, and that had approval of the twenty nineteen twenty twenty safety and security of school buildings. First question, what was, or is this a previously budgeted, is this a previously budgeted question mark? I am very concerned of James Stevens. Will the grant provide funding to raise the fence higher? And then number two was a question related to the security grant for one point six million. This middle schools, James Stevens, and work orders also mentions charters and also the island school. So the first one, go back to the one, it was this previously budgeted James Stevens. So I would ask that we have somebody from academic services address that question.
And basically, just to clarify, since that was my question, we had talked a few months ago about the safety and security of the back fence at James Stevens because it's so low that it's, you know, easily accessible.
So this particular, good afternoon, everybody, and happy new year. Welcome back. This particular grant does not address the fence that you're asking for, Ms. Gittens. This is about the exterior doors and key swipes. That would make sure that those exterior doors were not accessible. And this grant also provides all of our charter schools the opportunity to be part of this grant as well. And I'm going to let Ms. Kennedy, Director Grants, fill in any of those missing pieces.
Well, specifically on the charter schools, they were given their allocation, and then they made their decisions based on what their needs were. But as far as the district portion of that, that was given to facilities and safety and security, and they made a decision as far as the access and the allocation of the funds based on highest priority on making the school safe. So as far as whether they're looking to do anything additional with the fence, I don't, I haven't been part of that discussion.
Oh, I forgot, Ms. Patrick. That's why she hung up.
So the, so the other part of the question was mine, and in reading through the grant application, I saw the list of the schools that were involved. But then when I looked forward at the work orders, at each section, there was a name of a charter school. So I didn't know if there were more schools involved at this point in this particular
So, so there was the one part of the grant, which is the entire, for the district, and then all the charter schools were giving a certain allocation. So every charter school has an allocation, and they
So it is part of this one point six million dollar?
Correct. The, the actual one point six million, I think the, the amount for charter schools, it was one hundred ninety-six thousand of the one point six million.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So while you're up there, can we address, or is that coming up somewhere else about the other fencing? And it may come up in something else, I'm not sure.
Yes, ma'am. The, we know the fencing has been a concern. Unfortunately, it doesn't meet the, like, as an SREF violation, and we could take care of it through a maintenance work order system. So it, it is something that we have looked at. As far as the grant funding, as was mentioned, we looked at some of the projects that we were working on that were more of a high-level security at that time. And because of the, the grant funding, it's tied to the Florida Safe School Assessment Tool. It's a very limited number of dollars. And we looked at trying to make sure that we, we used it as, as best. And unfortunately, there are going to be areas of safety or security that we have, still have concerns about.
So is it on the radar, any?
It is.
All right. Thank you.
Hey, the second one, security grant for one point six million lists middle schools, James Stevens, however, work orders, named charters, and island schools. Just, island school is one of the charter schools was actually named in the grant.
Right, right. And I think Ms. Kennedy just addressed that, that it's all part of the same grant. I wasn't sure about that.
All right. Next one was, unless there's any other questions. I do just go back and mention that there were questions in D one, but, or D two, I believe, but those were ans, should, there's answers in your backup material, so.
Okay, um, could I bring something up?
Yes, please, Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah, because I had, and I haven't, we were just handed this. It might be the same as we had online, but had a brief discussion with Doctors Pruitt and Atkins on the phone yesterday about D seven. And I'm not sure that everything was answered, and I thought that it might behoove us as a board to take a look at this. It's adding a new position. And what I was concerned about on D seven, the budget value for this position is a little over fifty-two thousand dollars for a half year, and it's funded in the current year by savings from vacant administrative positions. And I think kind of after our phone call, we got some information about vacant positions. But I always have some concerns when we're adding positions and we're adding them because, oh, there's money left over from positions that weren't filled. And that's how I look at it. And I remember that one of my questions when we were talking yesterday was, why are the positions vacant, and what are the plans to fill them in the next eighteen months? Is that on our backup material?
And Ms. Stillwell's coming up to answer that question. We can go through.
(inaudible).
For example, let me just specify one that's in, in our office that you're aware of. We had a position as Executive Director of Strategic Planning and Sustainability, which is a position that we were going to, we were hoping to have Dr. Savage work in. But because we had a more pressing need in operations, we moved him into the Executive Director position in operations, and now he's in the chief operations role. And at this time, I have no plans during the course of this year to fill that position at all. And if, if that's something that changes, that would not be until an FY twenty-one budget, and that would only be after the approval of this board and a lot of discussion relative to that position.
Yeah, I, I understand that. But getting back to our discussion yesterday, and thank you, finally, for this. So hopefully, it'll be online, too. Is it online for the public to see, the new organizational chart?
It's not at this time, but it can be.
Well, the org chart is online, and if you click on the org chart online, it takes you directly to the web pages of the different departments with the contact information.
Okay, so the one that you sent out.
The one that we sent out yesterday was, it was an easy one for you all to, to be able to look at, so you could put a name right with it.
Right, right. So, so a lot of what we discussed, and I know I mentioned this in the phone call, is it's really hard to visualize when, you know, I'm taking notes, and it's this one, it's this department, and it's that. I'm, I'm just concerned that there seems to be kind of a musical chairs on some of the people and, and the positions. And I, I really just, this is me personally, have a problem with funding from, okay, this position has been vacant for a while. I, I don't think that's a legitimate way to, to fund these.
There were two, so last night, I sent an email, and it had backup material, and it was, excuse me, a spreadsheet with the positions. And there were at least two positions that there's no, that are not going to be filled within the next eighteen months. So I think our thought was to be able to provide you, we figured the first question, if we were adding a position, was where was the money coming from. So we automatically went to, here's where the money is coming from. And so those are positions that we don't plan on filling, that then would be able to, we would be able to utilize those funds for a much-needed position, which we determined once we kind of disbanded the Government Relations and Community Engagement Department when Dr. Carlin moved over to academic services.
Yeah, and that was the first question.
Yeah.
But it's not the last question, because I also had questions about overlaps of certain positions.
So in that email, I took everybody's questions and put them all in there and answered them all one by one. I can resend that. But I think the biggest question that I had received, too, was the difference between this position and Kaylee Rodden's position. And so in the email that I sent, you know, Kaylee Rodden's position is partnerships, community partnerships, which fully focuses on dollars and finding dollars for the strategic plan and things like the SOS program. The engagement, which most districts separate, is really about community, family engagement, and getting congregations and communities and agencies and stuff involved with the district, more not on financial terms. So things like, how do we educate about the proximity plan? How do we educate about the sales tax? How do we do all of that? And that's not what Kaylee's position is.
But, but see, are we not hiring a consulting firm on the, on the proximity plan? We're, we're paying good money to have a consulting firm. Are they not? How, how does this position mesh with the, what the consulting firm is going to be doing?
So this position will definitely help in that, will be a part of that, because once the consulting firm comes in and helps us strategize how we're going to do it, then this position is going to be responsible for marketing and sharing that out with the community and setting things up and going out and educating, along with the consulting firm, is my understanding. Ken isn't here, that they have a portion of that. But, but this is something that we're going to have to really take the lead on as a district. We're not going to necessarily want to rely on a consulting company to market it out and talk to our constituents, because we know our constituents.
You are really going to want somebody local that works for the district that helps with the marketing and community engagement efforts as it relates to the plan. The consultant, the one that's being recommended, this is a nationally recognized expert. This is a firm that has done this type of work across the country. It is, it is a firm that we believe will actually, using their knowledge and expertise, we think we can actually diversify even greater our schools across the district while still achieving the goals of proximity. But we really do not feel we have all of this expertise in-house. But when it comes to, to getting out and meeting with community groups, while the consulting firm will be a part of that, I think you also have to have a person who is the face of that for the district, and that's the plan for this particular person as a part of the role.
I'm done with my questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan is next.
I was just going to add to that. Essentially, you're, you're creating a role for someone that will be part of what they do. They will become the face for virtually everything that we attempt to do as a district when it comes to public relations, you know, talking about our programs, et cetera. So.
Yeah, we, we really, we really do need this role to go out and, and engage our community organizations, not just on a pure revenue footing, and that's where Ms. Rodden comes in, is really, you're talking about focus. In that position is generation of revenue. This is about all types of community engagement issues district-wide. So you can even, you're, you're even looking at things like, let's say, engaging with the early childhood coalition, you know, and helping facilitate that. I mean, district staff in that area of expertise are obviously going to be engaged. But, but overall, we want, you know, really one face for community engagement in Lee County.
And I would just add to that. I mean, we've, we've talked as a board for a long time about how we're not out there enough, and we don't have a coordinated effort to talk to the various, the chambers and, and other organizations. Staff is not out there talking to them, and we really need a coordinated effort for all of us to be out there. And that's, that's what I see this person doing as well.
And I certainly understand, you know, the concerns with the budget. What we're trying to do is be frugal with the dollars that, that come within the budget that was approved, without going and, you know, adding a position that, that, you know, was, goes over and above the budget that we requested. So to, if you're looking at some of the positions that we had, we felt, okay, they're not going to fill this position. Those are dollars that have been approved in the overall budget. We could certainly use those as a funding source without asking for, you know, additional dollars. There's other things that we're doing there as well, like, you know, we had an executive director position in student services area. We, we feel we need a director there. We don't feel that needs to be an executive director at this time. That's a small savings that can be passed on. So those are the types of things that, that we're doing.
Ms. Gittens? Okay, my, when I looked at it, and I looked at the cost of the, the consultant and all that, have, have we ever thought about doing a search and finding someone? Eventually, we're going to have to have someone head up that department. So why not look initially at finding someone nationally or whatever that has experience in doing proximity? Hire them and their staff to work with setting this up, because eventually, there's going to have to be someone there that, that handles that. So I, I just, I don't know. I'm looking at the, the amount of the consultant piece, when we could have someone that is local, that is here, and that is looking at what we need, and, you know, pay them to do the job, and have the proximity department, and, and not have to call in a consultant, because that person has the expertise to do it.
I would, I would say, in response, that, that you're not going to find that type of individual. This is a consulting firm that has, has experience working with boundaries and student assignment across the nation. So they have experience with communities that have very similar concerns that we have in, within the school district. But working with a consultant allows us to train and, and gain knowledge by working with that individual. So this allows us to be able to take in-house people, such as the person for this community engagement position, such as the people in our planning department who do this work now. That's who, who does the assignment work now, is in our planning department, to, to gain even additional expertise by working with this particular firm. So I think that, you know, if we just put a, a job description out there for this type of position, that's not work that, that people do. They're planning, you know, they do planning work. So that's what you're going to find in other districts. This is very, very unique. And just to, to go back a little bit in history of Lee County, we have, and this has been a practice that this district has done during these very, very, these are very complic, this is a very complicated thing. We started, we started with a boundary system, and with the growth that we were seeing in Lee County, we were changing boundaries, you know, like every year. And then we moved to the current student assignment system. That required expert, expertise to come in and help us with that. Then during the mid-two thousands, you know, I was a part of this, where we had a, we had three zones, south, west, and east, just like we do now. But we moved toward the subzone so we could get a little bit more closer to the proximity. We engaged a firm, I believe they were out of either Virginia or North Carolina, to help us with that work. They had a lot of experience. And I think it, it worked out really, really well, because we were able to rely on their experience while they were able to, to train staff at the time. So this is, this, so now what we're doing is going even an additional step. I mean, this is, this is even more complicated work than what was done back in the mid-two thousands. And so we are engaging, again, a firm that has some experience doing this. And I also believe that whenever you do that, part of what you're paying for is that natural learning that, that staff is going to get as they work with that consulting group.
Well, and wouldn't it make more sense, I won't say more since that doesn't sound right, but if the consultants are here and they're getting us up to that point, wouldn't it be rational to have them work with the person that's going to be doing it, rather than the community person that's going to go out and talk about what the consultants are working on?
Work with both, both of the individuals. They're going to work with our operations team and our planning department, and they'll be working with the community engagement person. So all those people will be engaged with the consultants.
So are you looking eventually at having someone on staff that will be in charge of proximity?
Well, in, in a sense, we already have individuals on staff whose job it is to handle student assignment and where students and programs are located. So the consultant, when you talk about proximity, that is the mechanism by which we assign students to school. So we have people, you know, our planning department, under Kathy Eball and the, and the planners, Dominic, who's our director of planning, these are people who do this work now. So this is expertise that they can garner as we move from, because it's not just about, it's not just about doing the day-to-day work of student assignment, but this is also about designing the system by which student assignment is going to occur. And then once the system is designed, you don't have to worry about designing it anymore. That part can roll off with the consultant. You will have the individuals that are here trained like we currently do, who can then operate the system, a student assignment that, that we will have.
So the bottom line is, when we finally get to fruition with all of this, we will have taken internal people and trained them, and there's not anyone else that we're looking to hire from outside, but just to continue using internal staff?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. You had a question?
Mrs. Patriona?
I was just going to say, I feel like this is like what you did, hiring a consultant to come in for the construction process, when we had to change the construction process. They came in, they helped us figure out that the three-stage phased approach that we have is the way we should go, and it's up to us to implement it. So we're having a proximity expert come in and put together a proximity plan that's different from ours, and then it will be up to our existing staff to implement it.
And yes, that is one example. Another example that's probably even a larger scale is when we implemented the PeopleSoft system. We had consultants that came in and did that. ERPs are often very unsuccessful. One of our districts on the East Coast spent $85 million on an ERP, and they were unsuccessful and had to walk away from it. We spent $31 million, and we were able to complete it on time and on budget. So that was through the work of really two different consultants that we used. At the end of that project, they rolled off. Now, we did have an opportunity to continue a relationship, but we chose to form our own department, and that actually was a better option for us. But that was knowledge that was learned while the consultants were here about the product, about PeopleSoft and how it operates. So now that we don't rely on consultants, we can use staff within our ISD division and others. You know, Brian Ebers is one example of, he was led that department, that the ERP department is what it was called at one time, that really ran that, is a significant cost savings versus the $1 million ask that they had to run that project afterwards. So again, that's one where we use consultants. We gained a huge amount of learning, I mean, tremendous amount of learning from that. But then they rolled off at the end of the project, and that was, they rolled off in 2010, and, you know, it's 2019, so, you know, I think it's been successful. People can argue about the product of PeopleSoft, but in terms of the implementation of it, it was a very successful implementation.
And then my second comment was, just a different perspective, to offer you a different perspective, Ms. Vaughn, on the openings that we have. You had, you referred to musical chairs. I look at it more as ensuring that we're staffing to meet current priorities, because our priorities do change as the board changes over and as perhaps student achievement changes or we face new safety and security needs, whatever, our priorities are constantly changing. So if we have an open position and that frees up money in the budget, I don't think the superintendent and staff are looking at it and saying, ooh, there's money here. What position can we create to hire somebody? I think that a new priority has arisen, and from there, rather than come to us and say, we need more money for this position, they've looked at open positions that don't have to be filled, because those positions are no longer priorities for student achievement, and we move forward from there. So that's, it's not meant to argue or debate, just to offer you my perspective on the org chart and the openings and the new hire and all of that. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do you want to move on?
Thank you.
All right. All right, next one, I believe, is the approval of the academic affiliation agreement with Embry-Riddle Aerospace Institution. So that would be Mary Graham and Brian Gangstra.
Good afternoon.
So we, there's a renewal agreement with, agreement with Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, offer dual enrollment programs through the Aeronautical Technologies Program. There's also a school in the East Zone, Eastlake County High School, and also in the West Zone, we have Island Coast High School, who have expressed initial interest in possibly offering aerospace technology program. Our department, our team visits all the schools, every high school, every year, and talks about new programs, or the process we have from implementing new programs. It really is the school-driven of what they want to offer in their program. And so as our department, we try to do the best we can to support them, the resources we have. This right here, though, is a continuation of the relationship we have with Embry-Riddle.
Thank you. Board members, comments or questions?
The question I had about it was, it kind of goes back to the proximity piece. If we have a program in one area of our, of the county, how can that affect students in all of it? You know what I'm saying? Like, we have Microsoft at Dunbar, so everybody that really, really wants to do that gravitates to Dunbar. What are we looking at with some of these agreements to have programs in different areas as well?
Well, if I look at, just to respond to this particular one, one of the things we did when we were looking at, I mean, there's, you have to look at this balancing act where you look, you know, you look among the different zones, but you also have to look at what does your district community need? And somewhere has got to be where it starts. So in this case, when we did the work on research for the career academies at Benita Springs High School, there was a great need for people to work in the aerospace industry specifically. And we'd actually had some people like from Private Sky and other entities that had made this well-known. So in our research, we determined that, yes, there are going to be shortages in this area. And then you also have this whole emerging industry of the drone industry. And so we determined that we needed to put, we selected an aerospace academy for Benita Springs High School, and it made very common sense to, if we could, to partner with Embry-Riddle. That is their area of expertise, you know, as a former technical recruiter, recruited engineers out that have that degree. So if you're in aerospace, that is one of the places that you're definitely going to go in the country. So this relationship for us made a lot of sense if this was going to be our first aerospace academy. Now, we even tried to make also additional partnership with the Air Force, which would have been the first Air Force JROTC program in the community, but we were not successful there. The Army and the way that they process that versus the Air Force, it's much, much different. So we were not able to do the Air Force part. So that started there at Benita Springs High School. But to your point, you know, one of the things that we're seeing now is, based on what we have seen successful there at that particular school, we see some of these, not aerospace academies per se, but training in the area of drones. That is something that you're seeing at other zones as well. I know that there's been certainly some exploration of that in the East Zone specifically, and also, I believe, at South High School in Riverdale, or two that I know that are looking into it. You probably know of others, but, so we do look to, what we, our goal is determine, really, workforce needs in Lee County and try to match that with our career educational opportunities at our technical colleges and our high schools.
And the workforce needs, then, are based on the industry in that particular area, for one, is what you're saying?
Yes. What, and Ms. Davis isn't in the office, but possibly, yeah, Brian, I'm sure you could probably answer this question.
Yes. Whenever our new program or current programs are evaluated, we look at state data from the regional demand occupations list and also the target occupation list. We talk to industry leaders and see what's the need, what's the growth areas, so we can prepare our students for occupations that are in demand in Lee County. And so when this program was decided for, you know, explored for Benita, the first thing you look at, what's the data show us? Is this a field where jobs are available? Is it a growth area? And really, as our Perkins funding model has changed through federal law changes, we're required to look at every program and see, do they meet these needs for the community? And are they significant in size, scope, and quality for our programs in Lee County? So every program we look at, they're backed up by the data. The DOE has their various codes that match up to the programs we have or the, on the demand occupational list. And so it's always a frequent review, and that's the best practice.
I just want to make sure that, especially with the proximity issue coming up, that we are equitable in placement of programs and not think that, you know, we place construction and, you know, and hospitality in one area, and we place aerospace and, you know, digital design somewhere else, that there's an equity across the board for all students that have the ability and opportunity to try those occupations.
And I agree. And then, you know, as the principals express interest, and we meet with them, and, because aerospace is a very popular program, and it gets a lot of excitement, and, you know, we'd love to see it, you know, in all three zones and have a chance for students to be able to take that program. It all goes down to, is it driven by the data? Is that program in high demand? It was high demand two years ago when it started at Benita, and it still is in high demand, and jobs are high.
You know, sometimes the students don't know that they're interested and have the capability of doing something until it's presented to them.
That's right.
So that's what I mean about the equity and the opportunity. But thank you.
Welcome.
Ms. Vaughn? Yeah, I'm very much in favor of that program, but I wanted to piggyback off something that Ms. Gittens just said. You said, the data from that community shows, but if we're looking at post-secondary occupations for these kids, somebody that lives in Alva or on Pine Island, you know, they may not stay in those communities. They're likely, if they're going to continue this interest after high school, they're likely to go to college somewhere away from there and possibly settle down somewhere else. So I, that rationale that, okay, in that particular community, is that what you were saying, in that community, the data showed, or did I misunderstand?
I'm sorry, let me rephrase. It's the, the state has data based off of 24 regions in the state. So we're in Region 24. It's a five county of Collier, Charlotte, Henry, Glades. And that data provides for the, for the region of southwest Florida.
The region.
And so that's where the data is based off of.
Okay, the way you first said it, it sounded like you were saying that particular, I was looking at it. And so it stands to reason that we do need to look at putting these programs in schools, you know, because Benita's at the far reach, the southern reach of our district. So in retrospect, it may not have been the best choice, although they were a brand-new school. And I also wanted to ask something from what Dr. Atkins said. In thinking about these different academies and these different special programs, you said something like, South and somebody else, they were looking at, maybe it was the drone? Was that what you were saying? Explain how that works, because I would think, is it like a school says, well, we would like to have a veterinary, or a school says, we would like to have robotics or whatever? Or is it, everybody comes together and they talk about it, and then they decide, well, what's most equitable to have these different programs in different areas? So how does that work?
Okay. Well, you're always, you're always going to have schools that are interested in offering certain programs.
Right.
Okay, so once something, if a school becomes interested in that, then their first step is, you know, contacting the folks in academic services and working with Dr. Spiro, Rita Davis, and her team, and making sure that we do have equitable placement, because that is one of the concerns. As, give you an example, we had a school that wanted to do culinary, you know, and we have culinary in a zone, so we have an opportunity for, you know, students to take that, and we were concerned about it actually taking away from the quality of the other program. So those are questions that have to come and become vetted at the district level.
And do we, do we have a limit on the number of academies? And sometimes it's just a space issue, because there's certain ones, for instance, when I was teaching at Estero, we had hospitality, and I don't think that academy is there anymore, the hospitality. But it didn't take up, I mean, my next-door teaching neighbor taught it in her room, and there were computers and all. But when you're talking about culinary, when you're talking about like HVAC that they have at Benita, and some of these others that need special equipment, South Fort Myers, what the cars, the, what is that called? Yeah. Some of these programs require huge areas and very specialized areas, and others do not. So I'm just wondering if maybe some of our schools might be limited by, you know, I mean, they just don't have the room to put these in? And I think this is really an issue that we're going to have to be looking at carefully in terms of our proximity, and, you know, students saying, well, I really, really am interested in Aeronautical, I'm really interested, but I live in Alva, so what am I going to do?
Right. I agree with you. It's just, you know, the limitations, however, in terms of the facility capacity.
Right, right.
Are real. But part of the hope that we would like to see out of the proximity-based system is utilization of also arterial routing and transportation that allows students to be able to move to different areas of the county. And so we do currently, even today, if we have a student that's in the East Zone, there is a waiver process that if they want to attend the aerospace academy, and we're able to do that, they can certainly apply for a waiver. We do have some of that that does occur. So as moving forward, I think we do have to be mindful, absolutely agree. We have to work, though, within the capacity of the facility while still being equitable across the district, so. I understand the point.
Ms. Trevenelli?
I'm sorry for being late. Thank you. I have to piggyback a little bit off of what he just said about the transportation. When I was in Tampa, Hillsborough County, they do the transportation, they have little, you know, hubs or whatever, where they, they all get on one bus together, and then they go to a centralized area, and then they go on, distribute out to other, and I think that was, you know, a fabulous, and they don't have any problems. Because I asked, I said, do you have kids that's going to get on the wrong bus, or they don't get on the bus? You know, because I just, that was what I would, he said, no, it works, it works out very smoothly. They, I said, well, do they say, do they, we're not going to ride home the bus? He said, no, they have, can we catch it at the second stop? He's like, no, we have to, we are strong on, you know, making sure that they get on that, go to that stop or that, you know, centralized area, and that's where they get on and off, and they don't deviate from it, and the kids know. And it works out great. And I think that that is a, would be so beneficial for Lee County and our transportation issues that we have.
I agree with you. I think there's some real opportunity there through arterial routing and being able to use hubs, transportation hubs. So if somebody is agreeable to get the kid to that hub and have a pickup, then they can get to that particular school.
And that allows, and this was for their, Fort Myers Technical High School that they had, or Fort Myers Technical, the technical high school they had?
Right.
And that, and that, they had, it was 99% graduation rate there. They were the highest in the whole Hillsborough County in that, their technical high school. And they have a waiting list to get in there. So, and that was something I was going to talk to you about, a little more about that. I loved it. It was a great, it was a great, it was part of the walkthrough, the different little, and it was really a good one, I thought, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, sorry.
Okay, I just want to comment that it is 20 to 2. We're scheduled for an hour, and so we still have about three pages of items. So if we have a detailed discussion, we might want to hold that for our individual meetings with the superintendent in the interest of time. Thank you.
Okay, I think the next question is for, we have a question for business services, so Amy will be responding, that's regarding F2, approval of the budget amendment dated October 31, 2019, and F4. So the first one is explain the budget changes in October and again in November. And, let's see, the next one is, can we apply for another criminal justice grant, et cetera? So Dr. Desmore.
Yes, all right. Good afternoon, members of the board. The question talked about why budget changes in October, again in November. Uh, the, the question talked about why budget changes in October again in November. We actually prepare a budget amendment to the board each month for approval. And budget changes happen pretty much daily throughout the year. And the monthly amendment to the board is prepared and those are reported on a monthly basis. We had both October and November on this particular agenda, just because of the squeezed-up timeframe with our December meeting. We only had one and it was a little bit earlier in the month, so we actually ended up having two on this particular agenda. Uh, as far as the criminal justice grant, the question was, can we apply for another one? And what was the impact on the program? Yes, we do have that criminal justice grant. We've had that for the past 10 years. And we're anticipating approximately $256,000 for this year. It is, the nature of this one is for training cost salaries, supplies and general course costs for the public service academy. So there was a related question around, um, did this have anything to do with, um, the program that had been discontinued at South? That's not what this grant is about. This one is specifically on the public service academy. Um, but the, the answer to the question was in the documentation. So, uh, have we kind of covered every, all the questions that were related to this particular item?
Uh, Ken?
Board members?
Go ahead. I know we have, uh, just a couple other, after the discontinuation of South, it's can we find the $13,113 to continue the program? And can we partner with law enforcement? And what is included in the $8,959 for the student fee? And are these grants for students, are there grants for students taking the GED? Those are all under that.
So, um, related to the continuation of the program at South, I know that, um, academic services, um, had addressed that, so.
Thank you very much. There was a question about the Criminal Justice Academy at South Fort Myers High School. Um, Mr. Matthews, and for those of you that worked with him, you know, he's very big on post-secondary placement of students that go through his program at South Fort Myers High School. And he really saw the numbers of students that were participating in a lot of the other industry certifications, welding, painting, those type of academies really blossom in his school. And the criminal justice enrollment really has gone down. So he, he has removed that program and is working with Rita, Brian and Mary. And with that, that team, they're looking at placing another program that would allow those students to go right into the workforce after high school as another opportunity for the students. And that's why the transition for that Criminal Justice Academy.
Thank you.
There's a question about the fees.
Yeah, as far as the fees, uh, the, the $8,951,000, $8,959 for student fees is all related to, uh, post-secondary fees. Various fees charged, um, for various programs and it's all in our post-secondary, uh, schools for, for those programs.
Thank you. Board members?
Yeah, the, just the last part was about the grants for, um, students taking the GED. They have to pay for that themselves and what is the cost to them?
I know Rita was asked that question and she wrote that the Career Source of Southwest Florida has grant funds for certain demographics for GED assistance. And she also said that rehabilitation also offered GED cost assistance. And she was asking whether there was a specific demographic in mind.
Not as specific. I, I guess, when I used to do GED at, at Lehigh Senior and are, are people restricted, are students restricted from coming if they don't have the fees to pay to come and do a GED or take the test? They can come and do the studies and the practice at the schools. But then when it comes time to take the test, there's a fee for it. So is there some way for those students to be able to?
And that's what she was saying, the Career Source of Southwest Florida, as well as Lutheran Services and vocational rehabilitation. So there's different sources.
Okay, and they're told that when they come to do their GED and all that?
I think that would be a question for Rita.
Okay, all right.
And there we go.
And, and I can get it later if you want. I, I just want to make sure we're not leaving out someone from getting that GED or furthering if they don't, um, you know, have the free, the resources.
Absolutely.
I believe that, that is it unless, if there are further questions.
No, question was, we just had, um, the attachment to this with the, um, audit updates and wasn't sure whether you wanted to run through that now or whether you wanted to do it after we finished all the questions.
Board members?
The explanations, I think, are very.
Yeah.
Yeah, for, that, you mean for the budget amendment?
That's it?
Uh, well, no, I was talking about the, um, additional attachment as far as, um, audit updates. There was an attachment related to, um, Fort Myers Technical College and an update on all of the other audits that are going on now, uh, that we were going to review as part of agenda review. And I just didn't know whether you wanted to do that now or wait till after we go through all of the questions.
I'm fine either way, so whatever your preference is. This was again a question that, that some board members had, so I wanted to make sure we were able to answer it when we had this opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Desmore. While you're there, why don't you just go ahead and go through it?
Okay, all right, good. Very, yeah, very quickly. So, uh, there were a few pages that we put together related to updates on all of the audits and financial reviews that are ongoing at this time. Uh, the first part of the first couple pages of the document relate to the Fort Myers Technical College and the financial review that we were conducting there. There is much information here that you can review that talks about how the issue surfaced, the steps that we've taken to, uh, assist and review out at the college, and there have been many. And I just want to, um, bring you to the bottom of the second page there with the important takeaways, uh, just to cut to the chase, that first and foremost, um, no attempt at any fraud was identified at, with, through all of the information that we went through. We have had a communication with several external stakeholders that have occurred during the last several months, most notably with US DOE, the Pell Program Office. So they are, uh, well aware of our, uh, status and the review that we have been doing. The Florida Department of Education Office of the Inspector General, there was a communication that went to them as well. As well as Moore Stevens Lovelace, who's our, the district's external auditor. Uh, they did in December, uh, audit the district's Pell program and noted a significant deficiency in the review or the report that they just gave us, but still deemed us to be a low-risk auditee as it relates to federal awards. That auditor's report was just received this week, so, uh, earlier in the week, so that's a recent update. And we had, you know, great cooperation between all district employees and the outside entities that we worked with to come to our resolution. You have a listing of all the financial facts and figures. So, uh, the ledger statistics in terms of how many student ledgers that we identified, uh, coming down to the funds owed to students after everything was said and done. There were 28 students out of the 817 reviewed, so about 3% of them uh, that the district owed funds to based on that ledger review. That total of a little over $26,000, you see what the breakdown it was of that related to what funding sources they came from or that those funds came from. And all of those funds were refunded to students as of the end of December. So all those funds have been, um, refunded. And then funds owed to the school, um, that this, uh, information is still pending some additional validation. However, approximately 58 students affected for about a little over $50,000. And we will, uh, most likely not pursue collections on any of these, um, you know, related to the internal billing errors. So that is the recent update on Fort Myers Technical College. The last page of the information that you have relates to all of the other ongoing audits that we have. The FY '17 operational audit, cutting down to, um, you know, just kind of the main information of the total 15 findings that were on that '17 operational audit. We've received confirmation, either confirm, confirming agreement with us on the information that we gave them or confirming that corrective action had been taken on seven of those findings. Um, and so we have seven of those that we've received some confirmation on. Eight of the findings were of a nature in which we didn't, uh, expect any further response from the DOE. So there, there was eight of those. And we're still, of the seven that we've received confirmation on, the last one that we're still kind of communicating with the DOE on is that finding number two, which was in response to ad valorem taxes. There was, uh, the original finding had 3.9 million of question costs. The DOE substantiated 2.7 million of those costs. So we're still in, um, communication about an additional $1 million that we sent a letter to the DOE, uh, back in September and was still awaiting response. So just wanted to give the update on that.
They approved the 2.7 portion of that. They're just, the 1 million is still the only one that's still in, you know, still under discussion.
That is, that's, that's correct. Mm-hmm. Uh, the FY '19, fiscal year '19 off-cycle operational audit. Uh, this, the Auditor General has, uh, concluded their fieldwork for, for this audit. We've, the district has provided all of the responses that they have requested. And now we are just in wait mode. The next step is for them to issue their preliminary and tentative findings report. Um, we thought that we might receive that in December. We did not. So we're anticipating that maybe it would be completed within, um, you know, by the ne, by next month. So we're in wait mode for that. Our FY fiscal year '19 financial audit, different from the operational audit. So our fiscal year '19 financial audit, which was conducted by our external auditors, Moore, Stevens, Lovelace, was just concluded. And we just received, uh, earlier this week, the report on that. We had an unqualified opinion with no findings on the financial audit portion and one finding on the report, um, of major federal programs, which was the finding that I discussed a little bit earlier related to Pell. So those were, um, that was the result of that audit that we just received the report on earlier this week. And then lastly, because you never can get enough audits, FY '17 FTE audit or FEFP audit, you'll hear it referred to both ways. This audit involves, uh, the DOE coming and substantiating, uh, all of the FTE that we report to the state in any given year, because of course, that's the major source of how the district gets paid inside of the general fund. So they audit that typically every three years, but we could, you, we're coming up a little bit more often just because of the amount of FTE that we have, being the ninth-largest district in the state. So the last one that was performed for us, this audit was performed in the spring of 2018. The final report was dated October of 2018. However, we just received the actual financial adjustment for this audit on, in December of 2019. So, no, I'm sorry, in January, on January 3rd of 2020 is when we received, um, the final adjustment for that. So of the 432 million that we received in base FEFP and transportation payments for that fiscal year, the audit adjustment reduced that amount by approximately $47,000. So that is .01% or 1/100, 1/100th of a percent for, um, that particular audit year. So that, uh, really breaks down to an excellent FTE audit, which is in the test to all of the work that a lot of people across the district are doing, including our information specialists, our assistant principals and principals, and many of the people here within ESAL, ESE, uh, budget departments, um, in information systems. So that is a mu, very much a collaborative effort. So that is the update on, um, each of the audits and financial reviews that are ongoing at this point.
Uh, Dr. Desmore, I, I know that Ms. Chair Fisher asked me a question, uh, yesterday. I hadn't had an opportunity to review the letter from the Joint Legislative Advisor, or?
Audit Committee, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, could you give them an update on that? We had a brief conversation yesterday.
Yes, yes. So we received a letter, I believe it was yesterday, from the Joint Legislative Advisor Audit Committee, asking us to give them an update on, and if you recall, this J-LAC was the committee that the superintendent and several district employees traveled to Tallahassee to testify in front of. Uh, and so they sent us a letter yesterday that was asking us to please give them, um, a written update basically on, um, our most recent operational audit, which at this point would be FY '17, because we haven't received anything from FY '19, um, as of yet. So our most recent one and the two before that, give us an update on your findings and your, uh, progress towards, uh, corrective action for each of those. So they specifically ask, "Don't just give us the, the response that you gave at the time of the audit. Give us that response and then update us on, so has the corrective action been taken and how is it going?" So it looked like it was, um, you know, kind of a standard follow-up with each of, uh, the organizations that may have gone, uh, before the J-LAC to testify. Uh, so we just received that yesterday, so we will be, uh, busy next week coordinating and, uh, compiling that information to be able to respond to their request.
Thank you very much for that. And Ms. Gittens has a question.
On the, um, the, uh, tech information, you state on the report that there were 449 ledgers that had errors. So going forward as far as, I mean, what was the outcome and going forward with staff and procedures in place so that this does not happen again? What happened to the staff that was responsible? And, and I know it wasn't malicious, but it was an error by someone somewhere?
Mm-hmm.
And how is that dealt with?
Good, okay. Thank you for asking that. So on the, uh, third page of the information, there's a section in there, um, related to continued actions, where we had to list out the things that we're going to do moving forward to make sure that, um, we can stay in corrective action mode. So, uh, first, there were two positions that, new positions that were provided, uh, to the college in June of 2019. And that is in the section about steps taken, uh, to assist. A business process analyst and an accounting specialist, uh, that were placed there to, um, you know, become experts within the process, to make sure that they, we have, uh, really good written process documentation and all of that. And then within the continued actions, we'll be doing, um, the staff at the college, of course, will take the lead in terms of training everyone that comes in that is supposed to know all pieces of the process and making sure that we keep our process documentation up and our training up. And then individuals from business services will do, uh, a quarterly, um, review to make sure that, um, we are seeing what we anticipate that we should see, so that if there are any issues, we can work collaboratively, um, to head them off before we get too far down the road. So that's, uh, kind of what we're doing to, you know, make sure that we stay on a good path moving forward. And a, as I stated before, there's been great, um, cooperation and collaboration between our staffs at, uh, the technical colleges and along with staff at, through, uh, business services and internal audit and through budget, with Sarah Cox heading up that, uh, effort for us to make sure that we stay in collaboration and that, um, we follow the path to make sure that we're, um, on the right path moving forward from now and beyond.
Was the staff that was involved in those errors, though, uh, was there a reprimand? Were they moved? What, what happened?
Well, I, so there were, there was some staff turnover, but the staff that is in place now is the staff that is, um, you know, being trained, that is helping create and keep up with the documentation and making sure that moving forward, we are using the correct processes and making sure that we can avoid, um, you know, what had happened previously. So I, I, I guess that's how I can answer that question.
Ms. Vaughn?
Okay, um, so the students, um, we have really one year of data from students that either underpaid or who, or underpayments or that are owed money, right?
Right, that's correct. One, one and a half, I guess, with, because we have halfway through 20 years.
Did we not look at, and, and, you know, okay, so this doesn't look like a huge amount of money and it's 3%. But for those 3% that are going through these programs, it's a huge amount of money that had we not gone through this process when we did, um, they never would have known that they were owed money. So one question is, what about students who, um, may have already exited the program going back several years? Because I'm assuming we had the same staff, the same accounting staff or financial accounting staff in place for a few years?
Um, well, I don't know about that. I can't necessarily answer who was in place from one year to the next, um, because I, as I said, there was some turnover inside of that time period. Um, but I can say that, and, and I agree, it is a large amount of money for an individual, which is why all of the refunds have already been issued for 2019. And part of the continued actions in that process is that we are now getting ready to review, uh, fiscal year '18 as well.
Okay, and at a prior workshop, and, and I was wrong in this, I mentioned that the former, um, director here, who's, um, working in the district now in another position, that, um, he had emailed me, and, and that was wrong. I went back through notes and I finally found something, that it was a phone call. And this was in, um, July of last year. And in it, that person stated that, and you weren't, um, the head of finance then, it was when, um, Mr. Blerton was here, that he had many times, and this predates when, um, the information first came out in the news press. um, the information first came out in the news press, um, on April twenty-sixth, that he had asked many, many times for, um, additional staff or staff that was more well-versed in these kinds of grants, because typically, um, we're not going to be in, in a high school even, we're not gonna be dealing with the kinds of things that a, a college would be dealing with.
It's unique.
Because they're paying actual fees. So, I took what he said to me on the phone, uh, to mean that the people, he, he said, were in over our heads, the people that I have on the staff are not, um, understanding how to do this. And, and so, he was seeing problems way before all of these, you know, way before the February when we, um, initiated having audit department come for ledger review. He was reporting problems way before that.
Okay.
And so, I wanted to get some information on that, and, and so, from, and the other thing I'm hearing from you is that prior staff were not specially trained. In other words, they might've done really well in, um, let's say, in a middle school, doing accounting for a middle school, but this was a whole different set of, um, things that they had to deal with, and, and actually, even a director who had never had any kind of experience, let's say, even in a community school, would be hard-pressed to work with this, because a wonderful principal from, you know, any other, you know, the secondary level would not be well-versed in what it's like to be a director-
Mm-hmm.
-in a college. So, I wanted to get some commentary on that, and did this individual tell me wrong? Or when were the first cries for help first noted? From, from Fort Myers Technical College?
I-
Till February of two thousand nineteen, or, or did they predate that?
I, I, I don't know that I can answer that question for you, but the only thing that I can-
Try to answer the best, the best that I can. My understanding was that, um, you know, you did have a, an internal audit back in October, uh, and with Mr. Brown, so that's our internal auditor.
Bob Brown.
And then, I believe that, at that point, you did have, um, our staff, uh, and this wasn't, uh, this wasn't something that they raised to, to even my level at that point. It was, uh, you know, anytime you have an audit, uh, function where internal audit goes out to a school building, let's say, uh, there are, um, there are findings, and an internal auditor then will try to work with that principal or that director to, to correct those findings. So, uh, at that point, I think they were working with staff and, uh, to trying to make those corrections. And then, he went back and did a subsequent audit, and I believe that's, uh, February. And then, once he determined, um, that, you know, he felt this isn't fixed at this point, uh, that's when, that's when I, you know, the red flag was raised, that we need to, to up the effort in terms of to make corrective a- action here.
But the personnel-
I don't know when-
The leadership personnel was removed in April, right? April two thousand nineteen?
So, you're looking at, again-
I'm just looking at a timeline.
Yeah, so, ti- timeline, as I see it, is that internal auditor in October.
October two thousand eighteen.
Right. Trying to work with staff, uh, right prior to winter break. You see, November, school administration was informed that they need to take corrective action. Uh, what happened then was school felt that they had taken corrective action. That was communicated back to, to the business services department. Mr. Brown goes back out there in February and found that, no, that was not what happened. And there, uh, that is what started this whole, um, this whole effort. So, it started in October with our internal auditing department trying to work with them. They assured us that they had made corrective action. Uh, they had not when he went back there in February, and that's why, um, that's why we started our effort from a district level. It was based on, uh, Mr. Brown's concern.
Okay, yeah, 'cause we, well, uh, at least I am, a little bit sketchy on, on the details of this early part. Um, I think we only really started getting details, um, well, after, for me, it was after the news press article.
Well, when, again, when, as far as the district is concerned, when we go out to verify that corrective action had been taken-
Yeah.
-that's when Mr. Brown came back and, and really expressed a, a level of concern.
Okay, okay.
So, that's, that's, that's when it really came to this level.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. So, at this time, uh, we are way beyond our, uh, review of the regular agenda. We're only at G consent, and we have, uh, the mayor law firm here to do a presentation, which was scheduled for two P.M. So, I'm going to suspend this part of the agenda and move on to our scheduled presentation and welcome the people, uh, Stephen Mayer and the mayor law firm.
Madam Chair, will we be able to come back to that, because I do have questions? Okay, thank you. No problem. That's great, thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Thank you for having us. Uh, I am joined here, uh, my name is Steve Mayer. I'm a civil trial lawyer in Winter Park, Florida. Uh, I'm joined here by, uh, John Kiefer, who is a lawyer with the firm of Wagstaff and Cartmel in Kansas City, Missouri, and, uh, my law partner, Mike Mayer, uh, as well. Uh, we're here to talk to you today about the Juul litigation on behalf of school districts. Our coalition of firms, including, uh, my firm, uh, John Kiefer's firm, uh, have filed suit on, uh, behalf of a number of school districts around the country, including, uh, California, Arizona, um, Kansas, Missouri, Pennsylvania, New York, Virginia, West Virginia. And, uh, we'd like to talk to you a little bit about that today. And the way we would like to handle it, with your permission, is we have a short video to show you. It's about ten minutes long, and it will answer a lot of questions that you have. And then, what I would like to do is to, uh, just answer any specific questions, and what, in, in, uh, we understand that your time is valuable, and we think that we have been in these, uh, meetings around the country, and so, we kinda think we know what kinda questions you're gonna have, and we'll try to anticipate those. Uh, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, you know, John Kiefer's partner, uh, Tom Cartmel, is on the leadership of the, uh, federal, uh, multi-district litigation for this Juul litigation, which is, which is undergoing, it was happening in San Francisco, California, in the U.S. District Court for the Northern District of California. Uh, John's partner, Tom, is, has been appointed by the judge who is handling all of these cases throughout the entire country, uh, as the government liaison, government entity liaison, including school districts. Uh, we, our group represents, uh, three, uh, districts right now in Florida. We represent Palm Beach County, which we've already filed suit on behalf of, as well as, uh, Brevard County and Seminole County. And are we ready to queue that up right now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Steve Ma- uh, good afternoon. I'm John Kiefer. Thank you for having us. Um, as Steve mentioned, we're gonna kinda play a video. I have a PowerPoint, but I determined over time that, um, putting it on video and having it professionally done was a lot more succinct than I am, um, and a little bit better way to give you an overview of the litigation. So, it's about ten minutes. If you don't mind, we'll play that, and then I have just a few comments, and then I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you.
But in the past twenty-five years, our society learned the ugly truth.
Make a video of yourself before this happens.
As a result, teenage cigarette smoking plummeted from twenty-nine percent of twelfth graders in nineteen seventy-six to just three-point-six percent in two thousand seventeen. That is, until Juul. The e-cigarette company that intentionally set out to make smoking great again among teenagers by targeting high school and middle school students where they live on social Juul rolled out a massive social media marketing campaign featuring young attractive models, doing everything it could to make vaping appear trend-setting and stylish to young consumers. The e-cigarette giant posted Juuling celebrities on its Juul Vapor Instagram and Facebook page, Juul threw vapor launch parties for young people, complete with Juul starter kit giveaways. Juul's fifth young models lit up Times Square, and Juul paid social media influencers to promote their products to thousands of teenage followers.
Really, really, really sound tasty.
Just like Big Tobacco, Juul normalized nicotine usage and downplayed the health risks. And Juul made its vapor taste good using flavor additives like mint, fruit, and creme brulee. And Juul purposely designed its devices and pods to look just like USB drives, something almost every high school and middle school student carries in their backpack.
It's really easy to-
Hi, it's really easy to use.
Juul copied the tobacco industry's playbook, and founder James Moncees has admitted they were able to catch up to the tobacco industry in no time. And in order to addict a new generation of non-smokers, Juul added organic acids to reduce nicotine's harshness. And while other e-cigarette companies were signing settlement agreements promising they would not market to kids, Juul refused to sign. Unfortunately, Juul's well-found-out plan to addict an entire generation of youth to nicotine worked. E-cigarette use has skyrocketed among high school students, up seventy-eight percent from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen. Not surprisingly, Big Tobacco took notice of Juul's success in the teen market. Altria, the makers of Marlboro, invested twelve billion dollars in Juul for a thirty-five percent stake in the company. Juul's patented nicotine salts are one of the most dangerous and highly addictive products on the market. One Juul pod contains five percent nicotine, the same amount in two packs of cigarettes. Engineer Ari Atkins, who helped develop Juul's devices and pods, admits Juul wasn't thinking about addiction, and they were trying to design a cessation product at all. Anything about health was not on their mind, leaving thousands of kids to learn about Juul's devastating health consequences the hard way.
It ended up becoming my oxygen. I couldn't live without it, and I needed it all the time.
Former FDA Commissioner Scott Gottlieb blames Juul and its youth-focused marketing campaigns for the problem that has grown into a national health crisis.
The FDA slamming popular e-cigarette maker Juul for marketing directly to students.
Juul spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to fund youth programming. Two teenagers testified that a Juul representative came to their school to give an anti-vaping presentation, and when their teacher left the room, they say the representative repeatedly claimed that Juul was safe to use. The U.S. House Committee on Oversight and Reform found that Juul deployed a sophisticated program to enter schools and convey its message directly to teenagers and children as young as eight years old in summer camps and public out-of-school programs. And Juul recruited thousands of online influencers to market to teens. The National Federation of State High School Associations has deemed Juul the biggest contributor to the vaping problem in schools. It's a problem of epic proportions, leading to more than two thousand vaping-related lung injuries and dozens of deaths.
I jumped two days for my lungs to fail, and I almost died.
And while middle school and high school students are paying the ultimate price, America's schools are suffering steep financial consequences. It's a nationwide problem. In Texas, some schools make kids roll up their long sleeves so they can't hide the devices. In February, Nebraska, they are randomly testing students in extracurricular activities for nicotine. There are vape sensors in Illinois and New Jersey bathrooms.
One Alabama high school taking extreme measures after a student was found passed out the bathroom after vaping. The principal removing doors off stalls in a boy's bathroom.
Juuling in the classroom has become a major distraction for students, teachers, and administrators.
Vaping, especially with the Juul device, is very easy to do, even in a classroom, where you bend over, suck it out of a USB port, put it back, and no one may know.
Teens and even pre-teens are sharing ways to hide their Juuls from school officials online.
Figured Juul or any kind of pod device would easily fit in there.
In the tie, if you open up this part here, little kinda like a pocket there, so you slide your vape book.
School bathrooms have become Juul rooms, forcing teachers to spend valuable time working for vaping students. School districts are tapping into scarce education resources, coughing up hundreds of thousands of dollars to pay for vaping detectors and monitoring devices. Removing bathroom doors, buying kits to test the contents of confiscated Juul devices. School districts are funding anti-vaping assemblies.
They're trying to get you guys addicted with vaping.
They are footing the bill for prevention programs and counseling.
Everyone likes Juul, isn't it?
Schools are even shelling out money for tutors for suspended students. Many school administrators fear the cost to combat the Juul epidemic will only increase in the future. But now, school districts are fighting back, hitting Juul where it hurts, in its billion-dollar pocketbook by joining a multi-jurisdictional lawsuit filed on behalf of school districts across the country to make Juul pay for what it's done. This morning, e-cigarette giant Juul hit with three separate lawsuits over what critics are calling the teen vaping epidemic. The suits filed by three public school districts in Kansas, New York, and Missouri. The Missouri suit accusing Juul of addicting a generation of youth to nicotine. And in Kansas, attorneys argue Juul utilized social media extensively, knowing full well that teenagers are the primary users. The Arizona School Boards Association, which makes up two hundred and twenty-three school districts and represents more than one million students, recently passed a resolution in support of litigation. Now, Arizona's largest school districts are coming on board. Among them, Tallis Union High School District, Phoenix Union High School District, and Tucson Unified School District, the second-largest in Arizona with nearly forty-eight thousand students.
Confiscated product, calling parents, taking teachers out of classrooms to fill out witness statements, searching backpacks, suspending students, routing students to social workers for tobacco prevention programs. I mean, I can go on and on and on.
In just the past few weeks, dozens of school districts have voted to join the litigation in Pennsylvania, New York, Missouri, Kansas, Arizona, Florida, and California. Some of the very largest districts in the nation, including Palm Beach County, Florida, others are joining the fight almost daily. Wagstaff and Cartmel, a law firm with a proven success record in mass tort litigation against dangerous drug makers and defective medical devices, is fighting Juul by applying the same public nuisance law used to combat opioid manufacturers. The law allows school districts to hold companies responsible for the damage they caused to society.
E-cigarette companies should be forced to pay for the damage that they purposely caused. It's the same way opioid companies are being forced to pay for the work they've done that that caused people to be addicted.
Under the public nuisance litigation model, Juul will be held responsible for past and future expenses for schools dealing with use on campus. Injunction relief, requiring Juul to take steps to combat teen use and punitive damages, steep financial penalties to punish Juul for their conduct, deter future conduct, and show the company their business model built on the backs of minors is not financially feasible. There is no risk for school districts. They will not have to pay anything upfront. A law firm will front all expenses in this litigation. School districts would only be required to pay expenses if the law firms obtain recovery on the school district's behalf, and if the action is not successful, no legal fees are We cannot undo the irreparable harm Juul has done to our kids, but school districts can take a stand to make Juul's vapor disappear from our schools for good.
Let me just add a few comments, and then I'm, I'm happy to take your questions. Um, I think I probably don't have to spend, um, any, any more time, or any time at all, frankly, um, trying to educate you folks on the vaping epidemic in the public schools. If I did, you probably wouldn't have invited us here to speak in the first place. If I did, you probably wouldn't have invited us here to speak in the first place. If you had asked me a year ago if vaping was an issue in the public schools, I think I would have said, "I don't know." I've gotten quite an education myself in the last few months. And one of the things that I think is the most dramatic and the most troubling, and I don't know if it came through, it was at the very beginning of that video, but that is that in a 40-year period of time, from 1976 to 2016, use of traditional, what's called combustible cigarettes by teenagers, went from about 30%, one in three high school students in 1976, to about 3% in 2016. That is a commendable trend line, and it's going in the right direction. It didn't happen by accident. It happened as a result of public policy, as a result of legislation, and certainly as a result of litigation. You saw a snippet early in that video of these graphic TV commercials we see today, someone with end-stage disease warning folks about the dangers of traditional smoking. Those advertising campaigns didn't come about by accident, and they don't pay for themselves. Many of those public awareness campaigns are funded by groups like the Initiative for Tobacco-Free Kids, and they are funded with monies that came about as a result of the historic settlement in the late 1990s with Big Tobacco that resulted in a monetary settlement to states and other local governments in excess of $200 billion. Mike Mayer, who's Steve Mayer's partner and coincidentally his dad, Mike was on the trial team for the state of Florida's case against Big Tobacco, which settled days before it was to commence trial in Palm Beach County. It was one of the country's first against Big Tobacco. And Mike was one of two or three lawyers who really led the negotiations on behalf of the state of Florida and nationwide. And so litigation is certainly not the be-all, end-all for every problem that we face, and perhaps for every problem in the public schools, but it has its place. And when it comes to kind of reversing the troubling trend of youth cigarette smoking, it certainly had an impact. Now, the troubling "but" that comes next is, although it took 40 years to reduce smoking rates among teenagers from 30% to about 3%, in just four years, the trend line has gone exactly back in the opposite direction. Depending on what statistics you look at, at least 30% of high school students are reported to vape regularly today. And what I hear anecdotally from superintendents, principals, board members, and my own kids is that number is way understated. Depending on where you are, it may be 40, 50% or even higher. The other thing that, we just didn't have the time to put everything on those slides. The slide that showed between 20, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, between 2017 and 2018, there was a 78% increase in e-cigarette use among high schoolers. Two things were not on that video. The first is during that same time period, there was a 48% increase among middle schoolers. The second thing that was not on that video is just about two weeks ago, the CDC released its data for 2018, 2019. And unfortunately, the numbers continue to go up. Another million-plus kids are now reported to be vaping regularly, and that's in the face of what we are seeing in terms of increasing reports in the mainstream media about severe, acute, and in some cases disastrous health consequences. So this is a problem of epic proportions. It is gaining increasing attention, which is a good thing, and we believe it's certainly high time to bring forth the resources that litigation can bring to bear to try to create a solution that the public schools can benefit from. As Steve said, I'm from a law firm in Kansas City. The name of it's Wagstaff and Cartmel. We do a lot of different types of civil litigation, but we do a lot of product liability, drug, medical device, and all manner of things. And we do a lot of what's called multi-district litigation or mass tort litigation. My firm filed the first lawsuits in the country on behalf of public schools in mid-September, so less than 120 days ago. Currently, we represent dozens of districts in about nine states that collectively make up over 1,500 individual schools and about a million students. And we are adding to the numbers in the litigation pretty much weekly. I will say that I've traveled around the country the last three to four months, meeting with school boards like you all, and the one thing that has made an impression on me is in 25 years as a litigation attorney, I don't think I've ever seen groups of people that are more angry about a problem or more energized to take action about a problem than the superintendents and the school board members that I've met with. And I find that remarkable because I think on the whole educators and school board members are probably not very litigious people and don't love the idea of litigation. But the frustration level and the concern level over the well-being of students seems to be at a pretty high fever pitch in all the districts we've met with, and that is literally east coast, west coast, middle America, urban, suburban, rural, from the very, very small to the very, very large. As Steve mentioned, we represent Palm Beach, Brevard, and Seminole Counties here in Florida. We've talked to others. We represent Louisville Public Schools, the largest in Kentucky, Tucson, the second-largest in Arizona, San Francisco Unified, and about a half a dozen in the San Francisco Bay Area, and a number of others. Just a little bit about the litigation, then I'll take your questions. The cases we're filing are in federal court. We have filed them all over the country. But the litigation against Juul has been consolidated by a panel of judges in the federal court system, and they've established one federal court and one federal judge in San Francisco, the Northern District of California, who is supervising the consolidated litigation against Juul. So all the cases that we filed ultimately get transferred there. That's called a multi-district litigation or an MDL. Some people call it a mass tort, but for example, if you think about asbestos or some of the big multi-law suit things that you see in the news from time to time, many of those end up being consolidated in the federal court system in what's called an MDL. That MDL was set up in early October. Shortly before the holidays, on December 20th, the federal judge supervising that litigation appointed a leadership team for the plaintiffs in the litigation. As Steve mentioned, our law firm and my law partner, Tom Cartmel, was appointed as the sole national, what we call liaison counsel to all governmental entities in the United States. So that means any school districts, any cities, counties, state governments that may have an interest in joining the litigation, we're, Tom specifically, and our law firm more generally has been designated by the court essentially as the point of contact for that. That is not by any means intended to toot our horn, but in litigation of this sort, we feel like it's an important consideration for any client or potential client, whether they are an individual or whether they're an entity like a school district, to have counsel that is on the leadership team of the litigation and has an opportunity to shape the litigation strategically, guide it, participate in the trials if there are trials, and directly negotiate with the defendants to the extent that there are settlement discussions down the road. Two other things I'd say briefly before I take your questions. Common questions that I've gotten from school boards are, one is, okay, the first is, how does this litigation get financed? That was touched on in the video. What we do is done purely on a contingent fee basis, meaning we advance the expenses only if there's a net positive recovery for a school district. Will we get any of our litigation expenses paid back, typically under a court-approved formula on a pro-rata basis? And then our attorney's fees are taken as a portion of the recovery. So there's really only two outcomes for this litigation from the standpoint of a school district. If it turns out to be just a huge goose egg, which I don't expect that it will, we've done a lot of this sort of work for many, many years, then that risk is on us. Under no circumstances will a school district be out of pocket or in the red, so to speak, versus in the black. The other is that there would be at some point in time a large, what we call a global settlement, that would be paid to various plaintiffs, including school districts, under a court-approved allocation methodology, under which districts would walk away with money in hand, and we would hope substantial monies in hand to implement things like abatement programs, deterrent strategies, deterrent technologies. And I'll talk more about those in a second. The second question I get is, are we going to have to count on devoting a lot of staff resources to this if we join the litigation? The general answer is no. No unless your district was selected as what we call a bellwether case. And typically, a district would not be selected as a bellwether case unless it wanted to be considered for selection as a bellwether case. As you might imagine, there are, I mean, today, there's, oh, 50, approximately 50 school districts that have filed suit. We represent about 45 of those. I expect in a matter of months, it will be a multiple of that number. It's not practical to try every one of those cases to adjury. It's not practical to work up every one of those cases in discovery. And so the court will typically select a handful, maybe half a dozen cases, to kind of go first and be what we call bellwether cases. So unless Lee County wanted to be considered as a bellwether and go forward as a bellwether, we anticipate the burden on staff time to be pretty minimal. We are working with all of our district clients to take whatever information and data you may have today that is relevant to this. So as one example, discipline data, suspension data, enforcement-type stuff. Every district we're talking to, their discipline numbers are increasing year over year, 100, 200, 300%, depending on the district. To the extent any quantification of expenses or costs has been made, we'll take that. And then we are consulting with our district clients on a go-forward basis to discuss whether there is additional information we may want to start capturing in the coming months and over the next year or so. Mindful of the fact that all the educators in your district have full plates and many things to do, and they don't need to be spending a bunch of their time talking to lawyers and getting us information. But I'm happy to dive into that further if there are questions. The last question I get frequently is, and it's related to the one I just touched on, we know this is a huge problem in our district, but we're not sure exactly what we need to do to show damages monetary costs. We're not sure that we necessarily have a number we could give you today. Some do, some don't. Our view is this: this is a monumental problem, and the question isn't so much what has a school district done and how much has it cost to this point in time. The real question is what's it going to take on a go-forward basis in the next one, three, five, heaven help us, that it's more than five years to combat and extinguish this problem? And thought of very simply, the way that I think of it is, if that trend line that took 40 years to achieve, that went from 30% down to 3%, if that's now been reversed, what's it going to take and what's it going to cost, at least as it relates to teenagers and the public schools, to get that line back where it was in 2015 or 2016? And those costs are costs the defendants should bear, not school districts or local governments. And quantifying those costs is going to be largely up to the attorneys like us running the litigation, experts that we're already working with on school finance, on school security and safety strategies, on vaping prevention, on nicotine addiction, counseling and treatment, and a host of other things. So again, I won't say more about that in the interest of time unless you have questions. But what I have consistently told districts and I would tell you all is, if you think, if you believe that vaping is a significant problem in your district, then you are very much welcome in this litigation, and we believe that there is an avenue for monetary relief and assistance down the road. As it relates to capturing and quantifying kind of what all that looks like, it's largely going to be the job of the lawyers running the litigation and the witnesses and consultants we work with, of course, in communication with all of our district clients. And we're in the process of setting up meetings in the new year with virtually all of them, Palm Beach and others, to kind of have listening sessions and understand the nature of the problem in your particular district, what you're doing, what seems to be effective, what's not effective, what it's costing if you have those numbers, what sorts of things you might like to do if you had the resources to do them, and all of those things. Because all of that will go into our analysis of how we begin to map out what we call a damages model. I'm going to stop talking, at least at the moment, and invite any questions that any of you might have of me.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. Board members, questions? Ms. Gittens?
I have one on the bellwether situation. If we were to get involved, how is the bellwether district decided? Is it something that you decide based on data? Is it the, you know, the legal aspects that decide that? And what is that? You said that was an additional cost to us?
Yeah, it's not really an additional cost, per se. It could require some additional time. So your question's a good one, and the answer is, it's never the same from case to case. But generally, here's how it works. As you might imagine, in litigation, you know, the two sides are always in opposition to one another. We agree on some things, we disagree on plenty of things, and the things we disagree on, the judge decides. Oftentimes, in multi-district litigation, bellwether cases, if it's a dangerous drug or a medical device, then the bellwether plaintiffs may, typically are all individual people as opposed to, you know, an entity like a school district. But the process is much the same. The plaintiffs, there will be discussion among the plaintiff's team and sometimes with the defendants about, how many bellwether cases do we think are appropriate for this litigation, and do we want to do them in tracks? So for example, the first bellwether group of school districts might be four to six, and we might have another group of four to six staged three months behind that, and another group of four to six staged three months behind that, kind of in tracks. And then the plaintiff's team will typically propose those districts that we think would make good bellwethers, okay? And so some of that is objective, some of it's subjective. Some of it is, where's the district located? How big is it? How big is the problem there? How good is their data? If they don't have much data, how big and how time-consuming a chore is it for us to start developing that? Do they want to be a bellwether, number one? There are some that are knocking on our door saying, "Oh, yeah, we're ready to be first." There are others that have said, "You know what? That's all fine and good, but I'm not sure that we want to be leading the cavalry on that," okay? But one thing we do with any district that has voted to go forward with us, we do have the conversation. Is this something that you're interested in doing? And if we think a particular district is a particularly good candidate, we'll tell them, you know, "Think about this. We think you might be a good one for that." So that's kind of, and, you know, the defendants kind of like to weigh in, and they'll, sometimes they'll have their picks. So if you think of a traditional personal injury case, the plaintiffs pick the ones they think are their best cases, right? The most compelling plaintiffs with the most severe injuries who clearly took the product. And the defendants, they want to pick the cases they think are weak, people with less serious injuries, with more evidence problems. So it's probably, it's going to be a similar process here. There's a give and take, and usually there's some plaintiff bellwether picks and defense bellwether picks, and then the judge ultimately will say, "This is sort of the first group." So that was a long-winded answer to a pretty simple question. But there's not additional costs. But if a district was a bellwether, we would probably need some additional time early in the litigation, time to meet with us, talk with us, start gathering some data that's not being gathered today. So there might be some additional, we would certainly still try to keep them manageable and not onerous, but there might be additional requests from us for resources, not money, per se, but...
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Board members, any, Ms. Patrica?
Did you have something to add, sir?
Yeah, no, I, was there another question?
What are the underlying causes of action?
What are they, what?
What are the underlying causes of action?
Okay, so the underlying causes of action, there are multiple. Our, and I can share with you a copy, for example, of the complaint we filed for Palm Beach County. It's 60 or 70 pages. The crux, kind of what I'd call the point of the spear, is what's called a public nuisance cause of action. A public nuisance cause of action, if you think, well, the oldest kind of most traditional application you'd see is, for example, if I run a landfill and I start taking in a lot more waste in that landfill than I should, and it emits an odor that makes it difficult or impossible for adjacent landowners to enjoy their property, right? I created the nuisance. Now I have the legal responsibility to abate the nuisance. The public nuisance doctrine has been used successfully and increasingly in litigation of this type. So for example, with the national prescription opioid litigation that is much in the news, and it was touched on in the video, my law firm represents a number of city and county governments in the opioid litigation. That is really the overarching legal cause of action in the opioid litigation. It's cities and counties suing the pharmaceutical companies that made these drugs and distributors and saying, essentially, you flooded the market with addictive painkillers. People have gotten addicted. People have died. That is causing a huge financial resource drain on us, the public entities. For example, the state of Ohio, at last count, spends over a billion dollars a year on the costs of first responders to go out when people overdose, to treat opioid-addicted babies. There is now a wave of lawsuits, we're not involved in them at the moment, on behalf of public schools, because some of these kids that were born to opioid-addicted mothers have learning problems. Schools are having to devote additional resources to try to achieve common educational outcomes for those kids. And so, the public nuisance doctrine is really kind of the overarching legal theory. Now, there's also, I don't know how familiar you are with, like, RICO, the civil RICO statutes, racketeering. We have a big RICO count in our complaint, because Juul, for example, hired all sorts of third-party entities, social media engagement and influence companies, to basically make it appear that everybody who was cool was using this product, et cetera, kind of a common plan, common scheme type thing. There are, there are legal and strategic advantages to bringing a RICO claim, so that's a part as well. There are some traditional negligence, fraudulent marketing, that sort of thing. But the legal, what we would call cause of action or legal theory, the one that we really believe best fits the litigation is the public nuisance doctrine.
All right. So that my board chair's head doesn't pop off with the amount of time that this is taking, I'll just ask for brief responses to the following questions. What are you looking for? Like, how much are you suing in Palm Beach, for example? What are you seeking in damages?
We're not there yet, to be perfectly honest.
So you filed a complaint, but...
We filed a complaint, but you don't have to specify the exact amount of damages. Honestly, that will be the subject of expert testimony and a bunch of experts. We're in the process of assembling that expert team. Some we've hired, some we're talking to. But we will be working with that team to construct a damages model that addresses everything from, you know, educational programming aimed at prevention, to if it requires vape detectors in the schools, to counseling and treatment, to academic support services like tutors to try to help keep kids current if they're suspended, those sorts of things.
Okay, and then, are you targeting just addiction in youth, or are you taking a broader approach? Because you mentioned cities and counties, and I would assume you have addiction costs for...
Yeah.
Cities and counties that involve adults. So what's the focus?
Good, good question. Our focus in my law firm is youth and public schools. There are a handful of cities and counties, so far, that have filed suit in this litigation. My law firm represents one, because we were asked to assist, the city of Louisville, which is the largest municipal government in Kentucky. Our focus is on youth and schools, because that's where, I mean, I hate to use the analogy or metaphor, but the schools are really kind of the canary in the coal mine on this, so to speak. The cities and the counties don't, I mean, a lot of them don't have monetary damages that are necessarily easy to quantify today. They may in 10 or 20 years, if unfortunately, a lot of these kids get sick and there are acute public health problems. That's, you know, in the big tobacco litigation, states were plaintiffs because states were expending billions of dollars of Medicaid monies every year to take care of sick smokers. The same is really not true, at least yet, with the teen vaping epidemic. And yet, today, schools are experiencing costs and resource drains to try to combat it.
All right. And then the final thing I'll say is, I know that this is going to be discussed next week at the Board of Directors meeting for the FSBA, and I think it would be a good opportunity for us to talk to other school districts who have decided to join the suit, and perhaps others who have been approached and decided not to, and figure out why, before we, as a body, have a deliberative discussion on it, if that makes sense.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. Ms. Gittens?
I also think that, and I think we discussed this briefly before, that we're looking at several areas of litigation and being involved, that we're involved with, and that we really need to look at the whole big picture, and it may mean an closed session or whatever, but there, you know, two or three different things that we're looking at being involved in. So we need to kind of decide, and maybe along with what Ms. Patrica was saying, asking other districts. But I think we need to kind of narrow our focus as to what we want to do or not.
Thank you.
Yeah. So we're happy to do whatever we can to support your further evaluation. We're happy to answer questions, have a telephone call, come back, whatever. And I want to be respectful of your time. If we have time, I think Mike Meyer has one or two minutes of just kind of observations about Florida's tobacco litigation and how that has parallels to what we're doing here. So, go ahead.
Just, can I, it's just one, oh, I'm sorry.
You can ask me later. Okay. Let me bring you back to the early 1990s, when I first got into Florida, that fight. And at that point in time, you smoked in restaurants, you smoked in airplanes, you smoked every place you could imagine. And you don't imagine, you can't look back and fully appreciate what we were talking about with this lawsuit. But we had a governor, Lawton Giles, God bless his soul, and Bob Butterworth as the Attorney General, who probably were the two strongest political figures nationally in this, along with Mike Moore from Mississippi. The idea was to change the course of what was happening. Little did we fully appreciate and understand how much we would be able to change the course, because we changed it, by the time we got to trial, so many things had changed on airplanes and in restaurants and in schools and every place else, that were based on the negotiations that were going on in the New York and Washingtons of the world, and we were involved in. I happened to be appointed by the governor and the attorney general to be the only Florida team member, except for Joe Rice, who was actually a South Carolina lawyer. There were 11 firms that were involved in the case in Florida, okay? Two, one from Mississippi, one from South Carolina, and then nine in Florida. We went to trial second in the country. Mississippi was set for trial. They settled their case. They were paid a huge amount of money, in billions, as it relates to, and particularly for a small state. They were not able to garner the benefits that the AGs had fought for nationally with tobacco on non-economic conditions. Non-economic conditions being five years old. I can remember candy cigarettes right about my height. And that's just the most graphic, but it's minimal compared to what they did. I mean, to supplement the nicotine time and time and time again to addict more, addict more and more and more and more people. So we had negotiated non-economic damages in addition. Mississippi could not get tobacco to settle their case on the issue of non-economic damages, which included billboards a thousand feet of schools, billboards all over the state, tobacco related to sports events. There's time after time after time that there were agreements made, and the deal was made with the AGs and tobacco, but they were not going to give it to anybody trying to try their case. So we go number two to trial in West Palm Beach. We had a crime fraud provision. We were going to get punitive damages in billions of dollars. They knew full well that we were because, not just because of what they owed economically and what they paid, but in what you needed to say to the tobacco industry, we want your attention, and we want to catch it, and we want to keep it. First week of trial, we're picking a jury. I get a call. I'm told to come to Fort Lauderdale to the AG's office. The governor is there, the AG is there, Rice is there, and the two biggest law firms, Philip Morris was represented by one of them, and RJR was represented by another, both huge New York firms. They had no connection with the firms that were trying the case against us. I was secretly put in that meeting. I could not even tell my partners what was going on, just because of SEC stuff and the things that, you know, were very intriguing. But, so we come into the meeting, and the guys look at the governor, and I don't know how well, a lot of you may have, I'm sure, probably met and experienced, he was a very folksy person, but he was beyond smart. He was, he's a brilliant negotiator. And he looked at him, and they said to him, "Governor, we'll pay you more, in the state of Florida, more money than we'll pay any other state, including California, New York, Texas, that are much bigger than yours. If we get to pay them more, we'll increase your amount." He said, "Well, that's very generous of you gentlemen," says, "because I know you understand that we're going to take a verdict in this case, and it's going to be a painful event for you." And he said, "And I think you're a nice gentleman, and you've negotiated this thing in a highly respectable way." He said, "But I'm not in this for the money. I'm in it for the children, the parents of those children, and the grandchildren. And I'm not settling it unless you give me all of the non-economic immediately." Okay? They said, "We can't do it. We're going to do national legislation. We've got to, we've got to be able to have some leverage with the feds." He said, "Awful sorry, I guess we're going to have to listen to what the jury has to say in this case. Thank you." Two weeks later, I get another call. And I go back down to Fort Lauderdale. Says, well, he called on the phone, gentlemen, he says, "They've given me every single thing I want. They've given us everything the AGs fought for. They're going to be stopped hitting people that are already addicted and telling them that it's still good for them. They're going to be stopped from starting at age four or younger." And he got it all. And he said, "Mike, you and Joe, figure out how much, and whatever you tell me, it's done." Now, there was an intrigue that happened after that, that I'll share with you at a later time. But we ended up, and we settled the case. And it sent a message. The signs were taken down within two weeks, within a thousand feet of schools, you know? And one thing after another, they just pushed and pushed. What happened, and the big point of this story is, we didn't fully understand it was going to develop in punitives to the extent that it did, that it allowed us the non-economic damages, which, to the governor, to the AG, to their credit, were absolutely 100 percent committed to that. And a lot of the lawyers were much prouder of the fact that we've changed the direction of what things had happened. What's going to happen in this situation is, is, they've already, tobacco, we will find out certain things as to what's going on and any potential connection with any other industries, with these industries that are doing the puffing. I just, it's going to happen. And when it happens, we'll be geared to push them to the extent that we accomplished, and we may have to do it 30 or 40 years down the road again, you know? So, but, I think that you have a real opportunity to participate in something that is very, very important. Any questions?
I'm going to ask Mr. Quick to ask a couple of questions first, before we continue with ours. Thank you.
I just wanted to, I'm the board attorney. I'm not one of the board members, so you guys are away. Just, I had two questions I was hoping you could address for them, because one had to do with the potential for costs, and I wanted to see, or costs or fees, if you could address the issue of worst-case scenario, goes to trial unsuccessful or lose on summary judgment, whatever it might be, of prevailing party, both fees and costs potentially being taxed against a plaintiff, in this case, the school district of Lee County. I just want to make sure it's, they're aware as to the full realm of what the potential upside and potential downside is, so if you could address that. The other question had to do with the contract. I know that you guys have proposed a retainer agreement as part of this, and I wanted to see if, in fact, the board, they can't do it today, as this is a workshop, but if, in fact, the board at some point does authorize to move forward, is that agreement set in stone, or are the terms of it negotiable as I go through it?
Okay, thank you. Let me address the first one. When you, I know what you mean by costs, like taxable court costs. When you say fees, do you mean attorney's fees of the other side?
Yeah, it'd be attorney's fees, because I think, you know, you would have, expert fees would be wrapped into costs if they were, if you were, you know, under prevailing party, but it could be wrapped in separately.
Yeah. So here's what I would tell you, is it would relate to attorney's fees of the other side. There is no exposure there. There's no basis under, I'm sure you're aware as a lawyer, we follow the American rule here, not the British rule, which is each side pays its own attorney's fee. So if any part of your question was, would this board ever, in a worst-case hypothetical scenario, be on the hook for the other side's lawyer fees, the answer is no. In the narrow, what I would call the fairly narrow category of taxable court costs, I would say a couple of things. First, I've never seen it in any of the mass tort litigation that we've been involved in. That's number one. Number two, if you think about, and you may understand this more because you're a lawyer, the way these MDL cases get worked up is everything that is being done. So for example, if me or my team go and we take a dozen depositions of Juul executives, okay, there's a certain cost to that. You got to fly there. You got to pay a court reporter. You got to stay in a hotel, all that. Those costs are being done for what's called the common benefit of all plaintiffs in the litigation. In a similar way, if the defendants are doing things, hiring expert witnesses, for example, right, they're doing that to defend the litigation on a global base, and by global, I mean the whole MDL. So... So there are thousands of personal injury plaintiffs, there's some class actions out there, I think there's going to be hundreds of school districts. None of those costs can really be assigned to any particular district, okay? The only costs that I can think of that could be discreetly identifiable to Lee County would be, for example, if somebody from Lee County had to give a deposition, a corporate representative, for example, we'd like to take testimony from someone and ask some questions about the extent of vaping in their district, costs related to that, okay? So a traditional taxable cost would be if they took that deposition and they paid for the cost of an original transcript, which is a thousand bucks, they could say, that's a cost that's identifiable to Lee County. Otherwise, all those other costs are things the defendants are incurring to defend the litigation as against all plaintiffs. And I have never seen, nor have I heard of, some sort of cost allocation methodology whereby a case is tried, a case is lost, like a bellwether in an MDL, and then the defendant said, "You know what? All plaintiffs in the MDL now have to pay some little piece of the taxable costs." So I hope that makes sense. That was kind of a long-winded answer. I think it is a, I've gotten it from a handful of districts. I think, and I mean this respectfully, I think it's a hypothetical. I do not see it as ever happening. It has been a sticking point for a couple of districts and in a few isolated cases, we've told the districts, "We are so confident it's a non-issue that if it makes you feel better, we're willing to consider language in the retainer agreement whereby we, the lawyers, would indemnify the district for any costs in the unlikely event that any were assessed against you, unless there is some prohibition in any ethical rules that would prevent us from doing that." Okay? So I hope that answers that. And I'm sorry, now I've lost track of what your second question, oh, the contract, is it set in stone?
Yeah, the proposed agreement, whether it's negotiable.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's not set in stone, is the short answer. I mean, it's a form agreement. We have executed that agreement or something very, very similar with all districts, but several districts have said, "Can you tweak this language here? Can you tweak this language there?" And unless it's something that we just can't live with or it's so out of sync with others, no, we've made some modifications to respond to requests of individual districts, and we're happy to talk to you all about any of that if you'd like to, so.
Okay, thank you. And I just asked the chair, because that was kind of an overarching thing, I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of all those things and get answers for that before they get to the specific questions. So thank you for indulging me.
Dr. Quick. Okay, so Mrs. Jewell.
Actually, my question was to, I would like to have input from the attorney, so that answered that. And then bring it back around to group discussion at another point in time and after the superintendent and staff has opportunity to weigh in and get, you know, get more information from the other districts as well. So I'm in agreement with what Mr. Quick said.
Board members, any other questions then? Mrs. Vaughn.
Yeah. Part of what I was going to ask was really touched on by Mr. Mayor. And as a matter of fact, when he used the quote, "Change the direction," that was one of my questions. Has the direction already been changed of that graph just by the mere fact that these, this huge litigation is forthcoming?
Yeah, I don't think so, unfortunately. The, and again, without getting deep into the weeds, you know, Juul, the company that we're focused on for now, that doesn't mean there may not be other defendants as the litigation progresses. Juul, 35% of Juul was bought for about $13 billion a year ago by the parent company of Philip Morris. Juul is now being run by the man who ran and managed the Marlboro brand for 25 years. What we don't hear a lot about in the papers in the U.S. is, they're aggressively marketing in Europe, they're aggressively marketing in Asia, all the stuff they say they're doing because they've got religion, you know, they want to be a good social actor, so they voluntarily took all their fruit flavors off the market here. Well, they're selling them to 13-year-olds in Singapore. It is, this is Big Tobacco. And the lawyers that are running it, we just kind of colloquially refer to it as Big Tobacco 2.0. I don't know if you picked up on it, but if you look at the marketing, it sends chills up your spine. It's the same color scheme, it's models in the same pose, it's normalizing nicotine use like with your cup of coffee. And so to try to directly answer your question, unfortunately, I don't think the trajectory has changed because Big Tobacco has shown itself for decades to be a recalcitrant defendant. And what is, I think, so outrageous, I'm a little passionate, you don't like passionate, what I think is so outrageous about the Juul thing, if I can just editorialize for a moment, if you think about traditional tobacco, people were smoking traditional tobacco when this company was founded, right? There were decades where I don't think people necessarily appreciated the health consequences of traditional tobacco. Then the science started to come out, and it didn't look so good. By that time, you had huge corporate enterprises built around tobacco. And so while it may be unfortunate, it's understandable that perhaps they circled the wagons to protect the corporate coffers, okay? But you'd like to think we learned from that. We had the Big Tobacco litigation in the 90s that Mr. Mayor was talking about, and to be clear, the non-economic damages he was referring to are the stuff that many of us would say matters more than the money. No more Joe Camel, the stuff that attracts kids. No more candy cigarettes, no more billboards within a thousand yards of schools, those sorts of things. All that stuff was done away with. Big Tobacco agreed to unprecedented restrictions on its marketing and its marketing to youth. And it was a huge fund of money to fund these graphic anti-smoking campaigns. And the beauty of it is, it worked. That trend line went like that. Unfortunately, Big Tobacco is a recalcitrant defendant, and they, or through their surrogates now, Juul, have found a new way in through the back door to market to youth. And the reason I say I don't think the trajectory has changed is, the usage rates are continuing to climb, including according to the CDC's most recent report of two weeks ago. And there are other companies and players in the market and people jumping on the bandwagon. So I apologize, that was another long-winded answer to a simple question, but I hope I covered it, so. I know, I do want to be respectful of your time, and I think we're probably about out of time, but if there's more questions, I'm happy to take them.
One last observation. You never know what's going to happen. Okay, there were agreements that were very specific and made a part of settlements.
Well, and I specifically remember as a young teacher monitoring the smoking lounges for students. And as a child in the 50s, the candy cigarettes and all of that. But I love what you said, Mr. Mayor, about the governor saying, "It's really about," and I think for us as a school district, it's about our kids. And since a couple people remarked on how they felt moving forward, I'm going to say that litigation typically that anybody has, it's going to be very, you know, like, "Oh, I disagree, I agree." But honestly, how many people are going to say, "Oh, well, I think they should just let the kids, it's no problem, just let them be addicted, let them die, let us, let our teachers' classes be disrupted, let us pay for a prevention center for all of these." It's really, and I see Lisa Roy out there listening, we're pushing a health initiative on, you know, it's our legislative priority, we're wanting to see health classes in our classrooms. I think we would be very hypocritical if we didn't take a stand as a school district. Of course, there are aspects that you have to look at, but I personally see it as very hypocritical if we don't take a stand. And I think having lived through, seeing all that stuff in the 70s and how the direction has changed, I think it can happen. So that was kind of my question and my, I just wanted to go on record as saying that.
Having raised, after my dad died at 15, I was raised on from there by my mother and three sisters, who were all younger than me. So what's very gratifying, I think, is the number of women in this committee, the number on every committee is a majority of women. And just, women are powerful.
Thank you. Appreciate all the time you gave us today. And if anybody else on the board or council have questions about any aspects, let us know, and we can do whatever we need to do to get you the information you need.
Thank you. And we, as a district, have already taken a stand about the health of our kids. And I think that we probably will have some more questions. I actually have a few, but I will write them down and we'll send them to you. And then I think we'll have the opportunity to talk to some of our sister districts at our Florida School Boards Association meeting soon and work with staff and then get back to you with, you know, more questions, for sure.
Certainly. Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, so I think we are slated right now for a 10-minute break, if you guys want to take it, or do you want to move on? Want to move on? Okay. So the next thing on our agenda is, Mr. Quick?
Did we get all the questions from the?
I thought we'd, I thought we'd let him do.
Okay, gotcha.
Is that okay? Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, I think at this point.
With this presentation? And then finish our questions on the regular agenda at the end.
My only thought about it is staff is sitting around waiting to give their input. It's, you guys call.
No, thank you, that's a very good point.
It affects more people to have them here than to one.
So then with your permission, we'll go ahead and return to the agenda and we'll go through it as quickly as we can in the interest of staff's time also. So, Dr. Atkins?
First of all, just want to make sure that we were still under the agenda review portion.
Yes.
Make sure there wasn't any more questions. I know Ms. Jewell had indicated that she had a question, and I thought it was related to that, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, so back on the, for my technical college, I wanted to speak after Ms. Vaughn. I actually talked to Mr. Mangan as well in July, and he told me that a year ago, which would have been July 2017, that he had came to the district and spoke to, and asked for support and help. So that goes back to July of 2017, and this is, say, in October of 2018. And then I remember there was an email with a timeline from employees as well, and that went back, that went back to 2017, I thought, asking for help regarding the financial issues and the Pell Grant. So I just wanted to reiterate, that was the information that I was given as well. And I didn't understand, I thought in August, when Mr. Mangan was going to be a principal at the Success Academy, that in August, that everything was over with. So I don't know when the investigation continued or started back, that was, because I was just told, it's, there's still an ongoing investigation, so, and I don't know how much we can even talk about at this point, but, and I'm going to bring that in. But just to piggyback off of what she had just said, that was just my understanding. So I just wanted to be clear on the information that was, I was aware of, and that was, that's what I wanted to bring forward.
Thank you. Response to that?
Just the response, I mean, the response I gave earlier related to my understanding of it, when it came to district level from internal audit would have been October. If Mr. Mangan had discussions with district supervisors prior to that, that's not something that I'm aware of, at least at this point.
Well, he actually told me he spoke to you. So now you're saying, okay.
I don't have any recollection of him talking to me about that.
So then, with Dr. Deciemore's update then aside, should we move on to item G, Human Resources, Approval of Personnel Recommendations?
Again, I think we had some questions that individual board members had raised, but we have met individually, so some of those, they were very specific questions, not really. But if there are any that you want to ask here, we are available.
I'll just say, I had four, five, six, and seven, and I'll retract that because we did discuss that today. The answers are already there.
Thank you. So then, Consent Agenda Operations next.
Let me get my place.
Okay.
Here we have item I, eight items, 1.1, Approval of Ranking for RFQ, Construction Management Services, Rerofing North High School. And on this item, I believe Dr. Deciemore's will be responding.
Yes. All right, good afternoon, board members. So the question being, have we adopted any of the suggestions a vendor discussed previously regarding the bid process? And as laid out in the response, we said, members of the procurement staff were recently at a construction advisory committee where they discussed that process at length, including changes that had been made previously when the process was revamped by procurement and additional improvements that had taken place ever since that, you know, even since that revamp. We requested CAC at that time to provide any recommendations that they may have had based on all of that information, and we're awaiting feedback related to that.
Thank you.
Just ask one quick question. Was there a conversation with the, I forget the gentleman's name that had presented the letter with the, that we all got about the procurement, you know, the process?
With the specific individual? I don't know. And I don't know if either Susan or Frederick want to discuss that. No, I don't, no. It appears that, no, there was no specific conversation with the individual that submitted the letter, no.
Okay.
Okay, next is Approval of the ITN, Proximity Student Enrollment District Plan. Again, Dr. Deciemore's and Dr. Savage. And specific questions here, what is included in the $280,000, I would assume, to cover the all expenses, et cetera?
The full extent of the scope of work represents what's included in that $280,000. It's the elementary boundaries that are designed from that piece. The additional $150,000 to just address the other piece are optional additional years for the middle and high schools. The presumption is that after conducting the more complicated aspect, the elementary side, that we may be able to use some of that information and possibly forego those additional optional years. That's something that we'll have to assess at that time, but it's as part of that, it's all part of this ITN.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, may I?
Please, continue.
Okay, on the bid that we're looking at, and it has the $280,000 for elementary, then $150 for middle and high school. Explain to me, is that like $280 for the first year, because there was something also in there about possible additional years? So is it $280 for the first year and then $150, or $280 for all four years, or?
Right. So at this point, it's $280 is what we're specifically.
For each year?
No, just for the elementary portion, which is the first. This is work that would be expected to be completed by June of 2021. This would allow us to actually unveil our full proximity plan, which currently was designed for elementary schools. The additional optional considerations were for middle and high schools that may, we may or may not require this level of additional support. That's not something we have to decide at this point if we want to engage in that work. The $280,000 is the only thing that we would be moving forward in, in this first initial phase, which is about the elementary boundaries.
Well, in the recommendation, it says $280,000 for the first five year, Ms. Bellamy, of base contract period, January 4th to 2020 to... of base contract period, January 4th to 2020. To, that's what was confusing. It's, so are we looking at hiring them for 280,000, flat, inclusive of everything, for the one year to get the program going? And then you come back with, and that's for elementary, and then looking at coming back for a potential 150 for each middle and high school?
In subsequent years, at the conclusion of this initial phase. That would be, that's part of this negotiation process, was to result in that option for us. What we're internally, the way that we're approaching this, because the proximity, the way it's been rolled out was specifically for the elementary schools. What we know is that the substantial work that will be done as we redraw these lines and, and build these study areas around all these individual schools, is that that will give us, especially with our expanded planning staff that we're hiring, based on the roles that were approved in, in November, December, that that will build some internal capacity. So that by the time we have the most complex aspect of this, which would be the elementary schools, that would give us potentially the effort that we wouldn't need to necessarily continue to consult with the consultant for the middle and high school. That's just a possibility. But as, as part of this initial negotiation, that was this, that was part of the scope of this, or this whole conversation.
So when we were talking earlier about hiring someone to, you know, to, internally to do this, the ideal would be at the end of that one year, when we've got the process in place, to have someone to, you know, follow it through. And, and do, possibly do the middle and high school on our own?
I don't, I don't, I'm not 100% sure that we're, we're understanding each other right now. So let me try to just real quickly clarify that our staff within operations is very much handling, in, in building the capacity to handle as much of the technical work as we possibly can. The whole idea of moving towards a technology, GIS, embedding that into the planning department is to bring us up in line with what the, really a district of our size and, and what city planners already do, just to kind of bring us into a level of what planning currently looks like in the 21st century. That said, the specific action of redistricting, the specific action of rebuilding and zoning is very sophisticated, requires, in fact, the software that's part of this package is proprietary, which we've negotiated to be able to utilize that software as well. The idea for us is that we benefit from this expertise, national expertise, and a very specific interest that they do and have a track record of doing. While that, that constant work with our department will be simultaneously enhancing our staff ability to understand how to take what will end up being produced through this action, these elementary zones, and really use it to, to do the very best we possibly can with this proximity plan.
So a gradual takeover of staff doing it. Okay. Basically, though, we're looking at the 280, the 150, and the 150, that possibly 580,000, that in the end, we would have a process for elementary, middle, and high school. But you're saying that right now, what we are looking to approve is the 280? Or are we looking to approve everything? All three pieces?
You might have to help me on the, on the bid, on this portion of it, just to make sure that I'm, I want to speak clearly on this.
When you click on that, the, the form that's on there?
Just because, obviously, anything with operations, the, when business services, it's a constant partnership. So they handle this aspect of the running the bid process and so forth.
And I'm sorry, Susan, you understand what I'm saying there? Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon. The proximity scope of work is for, is it a phased approach?
Okay.
So when we went out to bid, we didn't want to only go out for one phase and then have a different vendor have to come through. So we issued the solicitation in three phases with the option, first, to do the Phase One, which is for our elementary schools. And then Phases Two and Three are optional. We could choose, after we do Phase One, to come to the board and request to approve Phase Two and pay for Phase Two. And then Phase Three, or not. And a key component is that the Phase One includes software that exists, programmers that program it and have experience with it, and training of our staff of the software. And at the conclusion of, what we negotiated was, during Phase One, there will be no fee for using the software.
So we are looking at approving on Tuesday night, 280,000 for a consultant for a year to get this done for elementary?
It's not for a year, it's for the base year period of January 14th to, so for that, for Phase One. So the request that is coming before the board is for approval of the entire contract, which includes the base year, base period for Phase One, and then the optional phases, should we choose to go forward with them?
And like other contracts, you would come to us each year to institute that next phase?
Correct. At the end of Phase One, should we decide that we wanted to go with a consultant with Phase Two? Because we're thinking we might be able to do it. We would have to pay for the software at that time. But Tuesday's approach is to approve the base Phase One and the option for Phase Two and Three.
Okay. And one last quick question. When, if we're doing one part, which is elementary, how does that fit with overall, big-picture transportation? How can we change, you know, transportation processes for just one segment?
Yes. That's a great question, and very appropriate for this piece. But just think about it in the current context. We, right now, think of ourselves as three big zones, and then numerous subzones. Not necessarily designed in any way to enhance transportation or to really build around school communities. This whole movement towards proximity is to try to take the best of, of all worlds, to try to create a community concept without resulting in the resegregation of our community. And so transportation is one of the primary levers that we can utilize in this respect. But very similar to the way counties and cities and municipalities do planning, there, it's very intentional around where development is occurring, where residences occur. That's really the intention here, is to balance. It's a balancing act, educationally, socioeconomically, and from a community standpoint. But the goal is to get to the best of both worlds. We're still providing choice options to families. So they are not feeling as if they are tethered to only one option, and they're not satisfied with that option. But also saying that it should be reasonable, and it should not be arbitrary, such as some of the subzones, where it's cutting across areas that are not sensitive to transportation at all. All of this work is very sophisticated, and with the lever, with, with, that's why it's so vital to have a partner such as this. But transportation will play a vital role in that. You'll see evidence of this as we continue to bring information back, as this work is engaged with. You'll understand precisely, as you look at these elementary boundaries, how we could utilize those things, yeah, as we kind of move forward.
And I think we need to just make sure we always emphasize that not the, not going back to, to doing the resegregation, because that's a concern in the community, that that's what we're doing with this. So we have that explanation. That's excellent. Thank you.
This company actually has a lot of experience with doing really, you know, the desegregation. And what we have seen, I think I've indicated to this, this board before, we have seen somewhat of a resegregation based on a choice system, where parents make choices and about the schools they attend. Example I give is back when we were, you know, full choice early on. Our schools were relatively balanced, where, in the neighborhoods where my schools came from, in Paul Lawrence Numbert Middle School, which was off of Edison Avenue at the time. Franklin Park, right down the road, was approximately the same type of balance, very diverse. And then over the years, we saw that particular school come, you know, very heavy toward, I think particularly African-American population there, that particular school, and then also some minority in general, to where it was, I think, 98, 99% minority. It's not there today. But I think proximity-based student assignment gets us to a place where you're going to have more diversity, and not just racial diversity, but also socioeconomic diversity, student achievement, in terms of academic levels, those type of things.
Thank you. Great. Ms. Givinelli?
Just real quick, I just wanted to point out that the company that's been selected, Phase Two and Three, is relatively inexpensive compared to one of the other estimates.
Yes.
And, or bids, or, but this seems to be more of an, this, more of their expertise. I think that was my understanding. What would it cost, if we chose to do our Phase Two and Three, what would that, to use their program, like, or to, the fee? Do we know what that cost, or have an idea of what that cost might be?
If you remember.
If it were to go that route?
Yes, the, in the agenda, there's an attachment that has the bid costs, and it has the cost for each phase. So I think it's 280 for Phase One, 150 for Phase Two, and 150 for Phase Three.
Oh, no. Okay. No, I saw that. That was, I thought that was just Phase, Phase Two and Three. I didn't realize that's just the, the fee to use their program. Okay.
No, that's the entire cost.
Thank you.
That's the entire cost, she says. Yeah, that's the entire cost.
Regardless.
Yes.
Okay. I got that. Now I got, I didn't understand that part. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, next one. Approval of the increased expenditure for the Board of County Commissions, Clay County, Florida bid, various equipment and amenities for parks and playgrounds. These questions, I think we've got Amy and Ken, Dr. Decimours and, and Dr. Savage, I should say, that will be answering that question.
Right. So the first question was related to whether we could use referendum dollars for field lighting projects. Was that part of the original list? And the answer to that is yes. We can use those because they are designated as projects that either fall under security, emergency lighting, or as part of catching up with the maintenance rotation. These are particularly desirable because part of that, beyond just falling under the regular maintenance rotation, that might have fallen behind, and as part of a security measure for good lighting at some of our fields, where we have many, many students that are participating in extracurricular activities at night. The good thing about these as well is that they save operational dollars. They, any new lighting projects now have to be LED to match or to comply with new code that is out. So when we do these additional projects, not only do they enhance the security and fall under our maintenance rotation, but they also will end up saving operational dollars with increased energy efficiency.
Hate to be the only one, but I do have one question on that. I'm glad the question came up about whether it was a part of the referendum dollars or not. And the question that comes to mind is, is priorities. That is the priority of lighting before the priority of, for example, adding a portable, if we needed to do that, or adding resources where, you know, in a school itself that's necessary? And I don't know how that pri, how it's prioritized.
Well, as, as we look at the projects that are going to fall under the sales tax, only so many projects can be done all in one year. And it really is, that's a matter of all of our funding sources, not necessarily this particular one. But there are several things that are looked at, including how far behind is a particular project or school or area on its rotation schedule? What is this going to mean in terms of operational dollars? Is it potential savings of that? Is it a safety, security issue for students? I mean, so there's a whole host of all of our, you know, maintenance and construction staff that, and analysis of all of the different things that are out there that need to be done, and the things that they keep records of, and what needs to be updated or up kept as far as maintenance is concerned. Then they're bringing forward recommendations based on their professional assessment of the.
Of the needs.
Of the, of the need of each facility that's out there. Yes, correct.
So maybe in future, when you do the recommendations or whatever, adding a line that's saying this, this particular thing would provide us with a savings of, you know, an approximate amount would help to understand. In other words, you're saying the different lighting is going to help us save money?
It's going to comply with code, and then because it's more energy efficient, it will save operational dollars in the future. Yes.
So just that statement in there would be helpful.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
We do typically give the, the board, usually it's been about, you know, annual updates related to our energy savings. And it has this, this is directly related to projects such as LED lighting.
Right.
Conversion of chillers from, from the traditional to the MAG chillers and things like that. So that is something that, that they work on in the maintenance department. And Barbara Sedino comes up and reports, usually, like I said, I think it's about annually.
Yeah.
She, she provides us with the update.
And the next question related, if, if I can move on, then the next question related to why it was so underestimated in the first place. And one big reason was because there is an additional school that is added to the slate here on this agenda item that was not originally there. And it's, it's a matter of, you know, how, how many things, how many different things and how many different project staff feels like they can take on. And this one, they felt like they could put in this year. And then also, the other estimates of the other three schools that are there, which, by the way, they are all funded under referendum dollars and not just the one. And I think that was a question on there as well. Each of those, in our original estimate, was short by about $50,000 from what, for each school, based on the new estimates that we're receiving now. And those original estimates were made, you know, some time ago.
Thank you. Okay. So moving right along.
Okay, next one.
MM, total project cost.
I-6, Approval of East Zone Middle School.
Hey, back, back at you again.
We missed you.
Yes. So, yes, the question was, if, if there was going to be a sign, this is now related to middle school MM, if there will be a sign that will tell all passersby that projects are funded by the half penny sales tax. And yes, the, the sign design has been agreed upon, and the new schools that are coming up will each have one. And so that, that will be prominently, prominently displayed in the area.
Gateway High School got one?
Yes. Yes. Mm-hmm. We'll, we'll come back to you on a timeline. I know that, I believe that design is in the hands of the people, I think, making the sign. So we'll, we'll come back to you with a timeline of when that will, will be going up, but it is there. The, the next question was about impact fees, that impact fees are, it was the understanding that impact fees are collected for district as a whole. And so if that's the case, how are the funds equally distributed? Or is it based upon the amount collected in each zone? Actually, impact fees are collected and tracked by zone. The county will give it to us based on the zones that they were collected in. We account for those in different and separate projects, based on the zones in which they were collected, and only spend them in the zones in which they are collected. So was that, any, any other questions related to that?
Yeah, I think that one was mine. The reason I had brought it up was looking at, and, and we talked about it with the superintendent, that a less privileged area that has less ad valorem taxes coming in, you know, gives them an advantage. But the way he explained it was, if, if they have more ad valorem, then they get less of the capital. And it kind of balances itself out.
Well, yeah, it, it really is, is two different issues. I mean, those are the way that the funding sources are coming in. So impact fees are collected by zone, and must be expended within the zone that they're in. The ad valorem taxes, those really are district-wide pot, and we collect those district-wide. So those are the funding sources, but the assessment of the need is a complete, separate thing, right? So the assessment of the need of what has to happen in each individual facility is assessed and laid out. And then based on those needs, we're going to assign funding sources to them based on how we can use each funding source. Ad valorem is, is wide open for us, basically, to use more. Impact fees can only really be used for new student stations. So it really only comes into play when we're talking about building a new facility or paying debt on the new facility that we're building. And that's really where impact fees are used now, is mostly to pay debt of facilities that we have already built.
In the particular area that they're.
In the area in which they were collected. That's right.
But that, I'm sorry. But also, is it that correct? It depends on if the county or the city or whoever decides what the impact fee will be. Because a lot of times, they will give them credit versus having them pay that full impact fee.
Well, correct, correct. The impact fee is collected, assessed, collected, and given to us based on the rules within the ordinance. So if there's some creditor or something that somebody's related to, you know, entitled to, then, you know, we're not going to receive that. But they assess and collect and give to us based on the rules inside of the ordinance.
And I just had one more.
It's Jordan.
We have a committee that's designing the signs. Could you set that?
No, 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 no. I'm sorry. I was.
The signs?
Yes. It's, the design. Yes, it's the design, so our capital committee, we had discussed the sign. Our communications people headed up by Lauren took the information, and I think worked with priority marketing to come up with a couple of different designs. And our capital committee kind of looked at each one and said, hey, we think this one is the better one. So that was...
So it would not be based on our branding that we have already in place?
It is, I believe that it is, you know, based on the branding. But there was just a couple of different, you know, the pictures on it, and the wording, and how the wording looked. There was a couple of different options they gave to us.
Shouldn't take long to make.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep, but we left that to the professionals to design that stuff. Yeah.
Awesome.
Last one, approval to increase expenditures for the bid, concrete finishing, blockwork, Dr. Savage.
Okay.
So the first question was, why are we spending $62,000 on concrete on what is essentially a brand-new building? Again, part of this, actually, if Scott's here, if you want to come up and just join me here, just so he can add additional clarity wherever he'd, he'd like. By the, some of the, the funding that was saved through the total project at Benita Senior High School, there is always an expectation that once the building is done, and that you're actually there and walking around and seeing how life lives at the building, that the building principal had some discretionary suggestions about convenience in terms of sidewalks, walkways that were added as enhancements to that particular site. The only challenge is that once those things are done, that it's very important that, from an ADA compliance standpoint, from a drainage standpoint, and from a safety, security standpoint, that there is additional work in some cases that has to be done for that purpose. And because of that, that is additionally why this, that's what this work specifically is addressing. And so Scott can give you more detail if you would like more specific detail in those particular areas. The second question was on the same line, and basically, just was clarification if this had anything to do with the issue that had been brought up with Ms. Patrick and Ms. Ebaugh, and that, that would, regarding that what's known as the ditch, which Ms. Ebaugh carefully clarified is actually a drainage swale. And so, no, this has nothing to do with that. This is to do with what I just explained. It has nothing to do with that, just for that clarity. Any additional clarification on that particular piece?
Mr. Juvenelli?
So the concrete, where, is that state or federal, or where is the money coming from on this?
This is part of our budgeted expenditure.
But it's budgeted from what, I'm just...
It would be...
Which one?
Pardon? Ad valorem tax. Yep, ad valorem tax.
Oh, gotcha. All right, Jordan. All right, thank you.
It's just, and it's just one of the expenditures within that existing piece that's there. Now the, the larger, another question came up around Astero High School, and it just specifically wanting clarification on the $350,000, because that happened to be one of the largest expenditures there, I believe the largest one, which essentially pushed us up over the $500,000 threshold, which is what necessitated this request in the first place. That essentially is for work that's being conducted at Astero High School that is significantly beyond what they originally anticipated. The level of the pavers, this essentially, the safety, security issues, the entire courtyard basically is being pulled, roots cut out, and all the hallways are being removed or replaced with concrete sidewalks. It's just a substantial body of work. And unfortunately, in subduing, they realized that the same work would have to occur at Mariner High School with the same footprint design. So while it's a beautiful outdoor area, it's just from a safety, security standpoint, and even areas required there that would have pushed us beyond the threshold that we typically would see for this budget. But these are two very important jobs from a safety standpoint, so we just ask for your support in, in that other piece. The, the rest of the expenses, the encumbered funds that you see in that item, give more of a sense of what the typical costs that we would associate to this particular piece. These two happen to be along these lines. So we just want to ensure that we will have the sufficient funds to, to finish all the Astero work, as well as begin any Mariner High work that we want to do within this fiscal year.
So...
Yes?
What, what kind of surface will, you know, I taught at Astero, and I can, I can tell you, wheeling a book cart across campus was quite the challenge. And, you know, I imagine it's deteriorated even more in the past five years. What kind of surface is being put in to replace those, I think it's bricks now?
I would have to inquire on more specific information as to the exact, what it will look like and what not.
Are we changing out the different schools, the building projects that we have now that have open areas, courtyard areas? Is there a standard?
Well, I think there is certainly lessons learned along each way. I think that's part of the challenge. And not only just that, but for, from a community standpoint, depending on where you build, there's a substantial difference. And that's something Scott could also speak to in terms of our design, if you'd like him to address how we kind of take these aspects, sir.
Well, I, I think, number one, trees, although they're beautiful, are not our friend.
Right.
And exactly the reason you spoke to, eventually, they're going to grow, and the roots are going to pop up, your sidewalk slabs or your paver slabs.
Maintenance was sky high.
Correct. Now with the Parkland incident, and how we're designing the interior of Gateway High School, we have the perimeter covered with foliage, but you're not going to find a tree in the parking lot, so our cameras have, cameras have coverage. You're not going to have trees up against our structure, so we have to come back in 15 years and do these major renovations.
Right.
If it were me, because I'm cheap, the sidewalks that would go in would be concrete, but I can't speak for maintenance, because a lot of times, the principals have a say in this voice. It's their facility. So they may be putting some type of pavers down, maybe with an asphalt base. But, yeah, trees, trees are not our friend, unfortunately.
Okay, so there's no standard that we, that we build with for the schools that are either having renovations, or the brand-new schools? There's no standard way that we pave those outside areas?
My standard would be concrete sidewalks, ADA compliant concrete sidewalks.
Mostly concrete, okay.
Everything that I design, so.
Okay. Can I respond, Ms. Jordan?
Is this the list that was, like, the request of the schools? Is that where this list came from?
I'm going to guess it was a, a safety aspect. You have our safety department that does the ASREF inspections every year. You probably had tripping, you had sidewalk elevation differences. And if it gets too big where we can't grind it, you get to the point where you literally have to go in and do the removal.
And the reason I was asking, because I know, and maybe you've corrected it, in Fort Myers Middle School, the bottom of their poles that look like they hold up the building were all coming apart, the blocks.
Okay.
And I, I don't see that on here at all. Is it because it's...
They're decorative.
Rick?
They're decorative. They're not, they're not structural.
But it's maintenance, though.
That may not be part of the walkway. That might be part of a, a different budget line.
It's attached to their sidewalk, though, when you walk.
I'd be happy to follow up for a specific school request, to just get with maintenance specifically, and inquire specifically with Fort Myers Middle, why it would have been either included or excluded, or where it would be. You know, just based on, this just gives you, at least within this budget item, the specific ones that were included. Any exclusion, I'm perfectly willing to follow up and, and bring that information to your weekly board update, so that you all are aware of what kind of the game plan or timeline of Fort Myers Middle's consideration.
Yeah, I was just curious, because it is an outside school.
Yes.
And their walkways are definitely cement, and those are attached to that walkway. So I would appreciate that.
I'll be happy to provide that information.
Thank you very much. Thank you, staff, for your patience. At this time, we're about an hour behind schedule, so I'm going to ask Mr. Quick if he is prepared to continue, and give us our information regarding the FSBA amicus brief.
And perhaps live up to your name.
I'll, I will do my best, yes.
Oh.
I know, the pressure's on already.
Your patience and your indulgence.
No, no, absolutely. This was an issue that I believe Board Member Gittens had asked to be placed on, which has to do with an appeal that is currently pending before the Florida Supreme Court. It is separate from the House Bill 7069 Supreme Court appeal. So I just want to make sure that, that we're clear, this is completely separate. It does deal with ad valorem tax. In this case, there was a, an entity by the name of Santa Rosa Dunes Owners Association, the Property Owners Association, that challenged a tax assessment by the Escambia County Property Appraisers and tax collector. And they disputed it under a provision within, within Florida law that, under certain instances, exempts out property from ad valorem taxes if it is leased from a governmental entity for non-governmental purposes and rent is paid. I don't know all of the specifics of the facts. I've just been able to tell the best from the, the briefs that I've been able to get my hands on. But it appears that that's the provision they're falling under. But regardless, they have argued that the, they challenged their tax assessment under a, an exemption, and that they should have a lower tax assessment. The Escambia County School District moved to intervene to challenge the constitutionality of that provision, arguing that that provision would effectively eliminate or significantly reduce their ability to collect ad valorem tax, which would in effect, you know, negatively impact the school district's budget. The trial court, and then now the intervening appellate court as well, ruled, did not rule on the substantive grounds. The appellate court ruled on standing grounds, arguing that, what was argued and the appellate court agreed to, is that the school district did not have standing under something that's called the public official standing doctrine, which basically is a doctrine that says, you know, you, historically was enacted to tell somebody, you cannot justify not doing your job by saying, I, I think this is wrong, or I think this is unconstitutional. If, if the statute tells you, you have to do it, you have a ministerial duty to do it, you have to do it. You can't just justify not doing it. This is a little bit different, because obviously, the school district does not have the duty to collect the taxes. It doesn't have the duty to do that. So arguably, and, and this is, is what the school district has argued along the way, and has been unsuccessful in what they're pursuing at the Florida Supreme Court, is that this is an improper expansion of, of the standing doctrine that now prohibits any governmental entity, us in this case, but would prohibit others, from challenging the constitutionality of a statute because it affects something we may do. Because this provision would affect their ability to generate revenue and, and to collect taxes and set millage, at least on this property. That case has, it has been appealed to the Supreme Court. It has not been accepted yet. They, the way the Supreme Court works is, there's limited ways to get to the Florida Supreme Court. There's a handful of ways. And you have to file, unless you have the ability to file an original action there, which is extremely limited, you have to file what's called a jurisdictional brief. And you argue why the Supreme Court has jurisdiction over this case. And that's procedurally where they are. The, the school district has argued theirs, an answer brief by the, the Dunes Owners Association has been filed, a jurisdictional answer brief, I should say. And that is still pending before the Supreme Court. I think the jurisdictional briefs have been filed and pending for about three months now. So I would anticipate the Florida Supreme Court would rule on jurisdiction, probably sometime in the first quarter of this year. And then at that point is when the real substantive arguments will, will start being filed. The FSBA has sent out a notification that they intend to file an amicus brief, which is basically like a friend-of-the-court brief. We're not a party, but we have such a substantial interest. We'd like to file something. And not just such a substantial interest, but we have actually something substantial to offer, whether it be something, a kind of a unique legal argument that may be different than what just the one school district may argue, or we have more of a, we can provide a greater scope of the argument, or a policy argument, because in this case, it's an individual school district. But we can argue on behalf of all the school districts around the state, so the Supreme Court can, can get an understanding of what the, or where they would argue, can have a better understanding of the, the scope of this. So the FSBA has, has sent out a notification that it intends to file an amicus brief, and they have in fact filed a notice of intent to do so. And that's filed with the Supreme Court. But the, the amicus brief does not get filed until after, within a certain amount of time, after the party that they're supporting. So it wouldn't be filed until after the origin, the, the final brief is filed by the school district. So there's still time for that. But they sent out a notification to its members, including Lee County, that it intends to do this. And they estimate, they had, by their board, had set aside $7,000 to do that, to basically piggyback onto another brief, as opposed to filing their own individual brief, which they could do, as could frankly, any other school district, or anybody that might want to. But it's significantly more expensive. They estimated $40,000, which I think is within the realm of reasonableness for a Supreme Court amicus brief, that it would probably cost somewhere in that range. Now, the amicus is not a party. They don't have the rights to, you know, unless the Supreme Court were to grant them, which would be not ordinary, they don't have the rights to go up and participate in oral argument or anything like that. It's a written brief that gets filed. So that is currently, the jurisdictional brief is currently pending. If the Supreme Court accepts jurisdiction, they'll move forward. And then presumably, unless there's a decision to go the other way by the FSBA, they will file their supporting amicus brief, once the, the appropriate timeframe is filed, or the, once the appropriate time has, has, has reached. Now, the, the grander scheme of things is that if the, if this standing doctrine is expanded, then it can have impacts on, on Lee County School District, School District of Lee County, as it can with any other school districts, because they, it, it could then be used to limit potential other arguments you might make down the road in terms of challenging the constitutionality of statutes, because it could be argued the same thing, that this affects a duty that you have. So you can, you do not, as a, as a governmental entity, have standing to do this. It, it wouldn't impact an, an individual, potentially, depending on, there's other standing arguments for individuals. But the public entity standing argument does not impact an individual. But it would have impacts for, potentially for this board, depending on the, the statutes being challenged and what the duties are. So that's kind of an update, at least as to where that, that lawsuit stands. And, you know, we'll know more, I guess, once the, once the Supreme Court rules on jurisdiction. And either, if it doesn't rule, then the, the First District Court of Appeals, the intermediate court, their opinion would stand. If it accepts jurisdiction, then, you know, then, then anything can happen at the, at the Supreme Court. And, and, you know, we would, we would see from there. But that's, that's really kind of an update on, on where that stands and where that case is. But again, I want to make sure that it's clear for, not just the board, but for anybody who may be, may be listening, that this is, is completely different from the other Florida Supreme Court case, which is the larger case dealing with, with House Bill 7069. This is, is different, although it does deal with taxation. So if there's any other questions, you know, I'm happy to answer, or if there's any other discussion that, that the board wanted to have.
Board members?
My only comment is, I mentioned it earlier about the fact that, you know, we're looking at the Jewel case, we're looking at 7069, we're looking at the amicus, that we kind of need to look at where we stand as a board on all of those, if we're going to continue with all three, or what we're going to do, so.
Has Escambia requested that we file an amicus?
No, they, they made the request from FSBA.
So how, how is it that we're involved with an amicus? How are we involved in this case?
That was done at the FSBA meeting where they set up... At the FSBA, they asked, but it also...
We're not.
Okay.
I wasn't, I wasn't aware that they had asked individual school districts either. I apologize.
No, they, they didn't.
They didn't, but I'm saying...
Discussion of this at FSBA, there were two town hall meetings that were held for board members. It was voted upon. I, I'm just curious as to how this impacts leave. Why are we having this discussion at this time?
Isn't there going to come a point that if we're going to be involved, or is it just FSBA, and we're not individual?
It would be FSBA, I mean, unless they were to, unless they were to come to the district, individual districts, really, the, I guess, the impact would be the use of FSBA funds to, to do this.
Right. But I mean, wouldn't, at some point, then, wouldn't they want to be able to say, we have, you know, this number of districts involved?
I think what they, what they would say is, we, we are a statewide organization of school boards.
Okay.
We represent this many school boards. And they, frankly, they would probably include the list as a foot, you know, in a footnote or somewhere. We represent X number of school boards around the, the state, and they would probably list out all of them. So I would imagine that Lee County's name would, would be in it. But I don't think that they would be, unless there's, unless they have a change in direction, I don't think that they would necessarily be looking for me to lead the charge or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you. I, I just wanted to...
If I may, I know that they, they, as you said, it's the friends of the court, and they are really wanting to be, FSBA is wanting to be involved because of the fact that the, the Florida Association of Counties and the Florida League of Cities, they're all involved, as well as friends of the courts. So that's just another group of people that will be a, a party to this.
Yeah, and I... Yeah. And I would assume that, that the, the other side will also have, you know, they're going to have, you know, a group of, you know, whether it be property associations, things like that, that would have their amicus. And then, honestly, both parties, I mean, given the groups that we're talking about, at least on this side, I would fully anticipate that the attorneys on the other side would agree to, or at least would not oppose the amicus brief, and then the Supreme Court would ultimately have to approve it. But I would be surprised if they, if they opposed the FSBA as an amicus brief, yeah.
And there's a sense that other associations were waiting for the FSBA to join. Because if, if the, if the association isn't going to jump in on behalf of one of its own members, why would other associations join? But this impacts constitutional officers across the state.
It does, yes.
So the expectation is that others will join, but no individual district?
Yeah. I mean, unless they wanted to, like I said, or if the, if there was a change in the FSBA's position, that they wanted individuals to, at least as things stand now, as I understand it, that's not the request of FSBA. The request is, is to proceed. And, like I said, they will mention who they represent. I'm, I'm sure of it.
Thank you very much.
I guess I was very quick.
Hey, anything for the good of the order.
I just quickly want to ask whether there's any value in continuing to suck time away from Ms. Johnson and Ms. Reader for the weekly schedules that we're getting of where each person on the board is going and what they're doing. And the reason why I ask is because I don't find a high level of accuracy in those calendars. And, and I know that they're overwhelmed. We're in the process of determining whether, whether they need help, and what their jobs are. I think, I think it's a fantastic idea, but I don't think that, I don't think that everything is being placed on those schedules. So I'm not sure that there's true transparency there. And I feel like it's a waste of their time. If we're not all going to put our things on the calendar, then really, what's the point? So I just kind of wanted to have a discussion about that, and see if, maybe we can pause until we figure out what the structure of that office is going to be, and allow them to devote their time to things that are more important, like getting minutes up to date and that kind of thing. Or whatever it is that's more important than that. I'm sure that the list is as long as I am tall. And I just wanted to raise that for a discussion.
Thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Vaughn.
I, I just want to know what leads you to say that you don't think it's accurate?
I've, I've seen, I've seen articles of board members at events in the newspaper that weren't on the weekly.
So, so in other words, you're saying that we, as board members, the things that we haven't scheduled through our secretaries, should be on there, but they're not? Is that what you're saying?
I, I'm saying that I, I don't think that all of, every board member's events are making it onto the calendar. And so it, it doesn't make much sense to continue to do it, if it's not a thorough representation of what our schedules are.
But whose fault is that? The fault, or the responsibility? Let me use the word responsi-
I'm not looking to point fingers.
No, no.
I'm just looking to relieve her of duties, if it's not providing us with any kind of a, a benefit.
No, that's an easy question.
You're speaking over my question.
That's easy. That's an easy answer.
No. Well, that's what I, that's what I want to understand. Whose responsibility is it, if we have particular events that are not scheduled through our secretaries? Is it not our own responsibility? So basically, what you're saying is, some of us have been secretive, or lax, or, I, I don't understand, because I find those, I, I find them very enlightening. And I think it's especially important during this election year, for three people, that we continue to do that.
I'll give you, I'll give you access to my personal calendar. I'm trying to save her some time, on something that has proven to me over the past year in particular, to be, that just, it doesn't provide me with thorough information. That's it.
So I think the responsibility is on each one of us, to provide the board office with our calendars, when we are going to an event as a board member. I mean, some of us may go to other events-
Right.
-as a private citizen individual. So that would be the delineation.
Yeah. And I totally understand that, Mary.
And if it's missed, I, sometimes I, at the last minute, or whatever, and I just put it on my calendar. It's just that simple to me, but...
But I, I like to know personally, as a board member.
I'm going to suggest that we suspend that for a while, until we, I think the idea of that was, so that, that events that board members were expected at, would be covered by someone. And it's not necessary for all of us to go to every event. So a lot of times, we work in our own areas, which is convenient, and, and closer, et cetera. So I, I think that was the intent. But if it's not all on there, and we are, we're appearing as a board member, it should be on there. Susan, could I ask you for input, please?
Sometimes, I, in fact, I find that some of these members, sometimes they have things on their calendars, where they're going.
Sometimes, board members put things on their, on themselves, on their own calendars. And it's not our, it's not us girls that are doing it. So it's just...
I do that.
I just know sometimes it's not accurate.
I do too, if I'm missing something.
Right. Yeah.
I mean, sometimes, can I just say too, sometimes I'll look at the calendar, and I'm thinking, I want to go to this. And I'll look at the calendar, see there's three other people going, and I decide I'm not going to do it. It's not on my calendar, so I didn't add it to my calendar, because there's three other people going, all right.
Right. Right. And-
And it's just a personal decision.
And maybe, maybe that's-
And it's very helpful. That's why it's-
I think that's a discussion for another, another time for us, because we want to be covered. We want to have the board at those events, where the community is expecting some board representation.
So can we just not, I mean, I don't know. Maybe we should take a consensus on just stopping it cold, because it is helpful to some, but however you all want to handle it.
Right. Yes, Betsy.
Can we look at what precipitated this whole thing? This was precipitated by one of our, one of our, I don't know, the board, the meetings that we had. I think, actually, it was one that was at, that the foundation hosted, okay? And it came out of a discussion that there were people going to things, and going as board members, that other people had no idea about. For instance, using myself as an example, I learned that there were members that were having regular meetings with Talc. And I had never been informed that, as a new board member at that time, that that was even an option. And I said, wow, I see this, and what, and, and I think there are other aspects here. It came out of transparency among all of us, as board members. And I am vehemently opposed to getting rid of that. If we're going, especially in this election year, if we're going to things as board members, it needs to be as board members, and it needs to be out there for us to see, and for the public also, to see. The public should have access, we should have access. And that's how I feel about it.
Okay. Other comments?
I just have a question. What difference does it make, if it's an election year, or not an election year? I don't, I'm not understanding any of that, because I don't really look at what you all do. I know what I'm doing. So, and if you are doing something, that's great, you know, but I don't, that does not-
Shall I answer it?
...make me decide whether or not I'm going or not going. What I'm invited to, then I answer.
Shall I answer it?
Answer...
Your question?
Oh, yes.
That you don't understand what I'm saying?
I don't.
What I'm saying is, that it's, it's an easy vehicle for incumbents to use school board appearances, for campaign appearances, as, as well. That never should be, that shouldn't be.
So should they stop going to things?
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Yes.
Aren't we supposed to police each other? Isn't that what we have said, like a thousand times?
Right. It is not our jobs.
It's not policing each other. All right. It's transparency, to see what people are doing.
It is policing each other.
So then, let's, let's take a vote.
I disagree.
How many people think that we need, first of all, that we will all agree to put our events that we go to, as board members, on the calendar? And, and I think that when board members are campaigning, they don't need to stop going to events as board members, because they're still board members.
Never.
I mean, that, that's part of the-
No, Mary, I never said that.
So how many, how many people are in favor of keeping the calendar, and agreeing to put all of your events as board members on your calendar, in a timely manner, so that the ladies in the office can do that?
Well, I, and I know I'm guilty of that, because I, sometimes I don't know until the last minute, if I can or cannot. So instead of bothering Susan or Mary, I just go on there, because I'm grown. And I put it on there, so that they know where I'm at, if they need me. Because if you need me, call me. They, I'm just saying, don't call me. But I will definitely do that for, out of respect for them.
Right.
But it's not because I'm, I don't-
And I think we all agree that sometimes we may get a call, or something, at the last minute, when the calendar has already been put out.
Correct. That's why it's not on there.
And so we may not see it. But we don't need to police each other.
I didn't realize this was going to be remotely controversial. I'm just trying to save her some time. So if you guys want to keep it the way it is, I'm happy to keep it the way it is.
Okay. How many want to keep it the way it is?
I'm sorry. I, I really was trying to make life easier for you, and I failed, because I brought it up.
Okay. So, Susan, I'm sorry. We keep it the way it is. Thank you.
All right.
And I'll do better from now on.
Sure.
I can't promise. I have, I'm sorry.
Mr. Quick?
There's going to be a good cause item that we're going to have on, and do you want me to take the board members, and I can tell you about the good cause item later?
Sure.
Oh, okay, let me tell you now. Okay, I was just going to bring forward a good cause item for the next meeting, which had to do with the, the, I guess, the other challenge to HB 769, which I, we had spoken to each about. It's the one that I referred to as the secondary challenge.
Yes.
They, the group that, they're kind of shoring up the, that they are intending to withdraw that secondary challenge, again, not the one at the Supreme Court.
Right.
And so they reached back out to us. And since, you know, we're, we're meeting this week, I said, you know what, let me just put it back on the agenda, at the will of the chair, if the chair thinks there's good cause, or the, or the board does. So I wanted to mention that, if, if you believe that there's good cause, I, I can address that. That way, we can just reconfirm what we had discussed.
I think that would be perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So on Tuesday, at 2:00, we have a briefing meeting, followed by a special meeting, and a action meeting at 6:00. And Ms. Gittens, you had something else for good of the order?
I just had two quick things, really. I wanted to put forth that our board attorneys be involved in, in two different things. One is the negotiations and talking with RSM about our hotline. And I know that RSM is working with staff, but I would like to suggest that we have our board attorney somehow involved in that, as they are discussing protocols and, and processes and all of that. And also, I would like to put forth to have the board attorney representing us in the selection process of the attorney. Not selecting, but in our discussion today, we're going to be getting all the information, all of the, I guess, the resumes and the information about the different attorneys. But I just wanted to make sure, for the record, that it's clear, we have, the, the discussion is whether to do an individual attorney, whether to have a, a different firm, or to continue with the firm that we have. And I, they are putting together rubrics and protocols, and that's going to be brought before us. And I just need to, I just wanted to make sure we get that out there, that the selection of, of the possible individual attorney is not the end of the process. It is part of a total process of deciding, is there someone individually we want to do, or to use the firm, or to, you know, get a new firm. So I just wanted to put that out there. Last thing is, I believe that these sheets with the questions, and I don't know if, if Jen updates them as we're going, or, or what, but that they should be a part of the, the minutes. Not that you would have to take it, but just add it as an attachment to the minutes.
I believe Jen adds the document.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure-
To the archives, not in the minutes, but to the archives.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's it.
Mrs. Morgan?
So, forgive me, and I may have missed something at some point, but I thought we had directed HR to do a search for a board attorney, that that was the direction we had decided to go.
Yes.
And that is what we had told HR. I did, I don't, I would like to know if we're, if we are on a path, or we're still on a three-way path. It's this firm, it's another firm, or it's a board attorney. That's not my understanding. So I would like clarification, please.
And I would agree too, because, because clarify, I thought it was, there was not three ways. I thought it was, we were, was an option to see if we had candidates, and see what those candidates are.
Exactly.
And then, and then decide if we're going to go with one of those candidates, or if we're just going to keep the firm we have, which is West Slaughter.
Yes.
That was my understanding. So-
Yes.
We got all different kinds of understandings here, I think, it sounds like. So I just want, like, we do need clarity.
So, so let me clarify then. So at that workshop, and I don't remember the date, since I was the dissenting vote, I will tell you that the majority of the board agreed to direct HR to look for candidates for an individual board attorney.
But not, not to see who was out there. I mean, that wasn't, if so, then I, I was not a-
To advertise for a board attorney, and I don't know if-
To see what the options were, and if we had, if there was anybody. Because when we did it before, there weren't, there was a very small pool of people.
No options, I thought.
Who's going to apply for a job that might or might not be there? You know what I mean? Like, I don't know.
I want to get that.
Yeah, but-
Let's go back and watch a meeting, and talk about it again on Tuesday.
But if that was the feeling, then I need to retract my vote, because that is not what, I didn't vote to say, we're just going to have a single attorney. And if that was it, then I will retract my vote on it.
I, I would, I would recommend that we each go back and watch that workshop video, and, and see for clarification.
Okay.
Yes, Mrs. Vaughn.
And are we done with that topic? Because I have another-
Did you get a phone call?
Good of the order. Just really, really quickly, it's a quick question. There was an email exchange about workshopping and briefing on the millage, to give our teachers raises, and support staff. And Dr. Atkins gave a reply, that the staff is already working on it.
Yes.
But there was no indication of when that work, actual direction, I can begin working with staff, to establish a workshop date for the near future. So I was wondering if we're ready to do that, because time is tick-tocking away. If we're going to discuss, and should the board decide that we want to endorse the millage increase, we need time, as there was time with the half penny sales tax.
So, yes. And so, as, as a board member who has brought this up nearly every meeting recently, I will say that I know that staff is working on it. And typically, I'll ask Dr. Atkins to reply, but typically, in my experience, when staff has the information ready, they will bring it to us.
All right. So then it just says-
So there is a time, there is a timeline and a timeframe. And I think Ms. Stillwell has gotten that information from the elections office. And so I know it is a work in progress, but I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Atkins.
Sure. So I, I'll just provide you a little bit more detail that goes with the, the response that I provided. So you received the response. The first step in that was, of course, to determine how much would be collected. That's been done by Dr. Decemoore's in the, and with that piece of information, Dr. Pruitt was directed to begin working on a compensation piece, okay? So then, what we have decided to do, because Dr. Decemoore's also indicated that, remember, compensation is a, is a portion of what these funds can be used for, academic programs, such as extension of the school day, after-school program, et cetera, could also be a part of what your overall proposal will be. So I've asked Dr. Spiro to bring back that proposal. That would come back at the next chief meetings, which is not next week, but the following week. And we hope that after coming together at that particular meeting, which is not the upcoming Wednesday, but the following Wednesday, that at that point, we could put together proposals that we bring to the board. In the meantime, knowing that information, I've already talked to Jen about going out there and looking right now for a workshop date that would align with that timeline that I just gave you. So-
And really, that wasn't my question. I'm quoting-